I'd like to call to order the Avalon City Council meeting, which will also include a meeting of the City Council acting as a successor agency to the Avalon Community Improvement Agency and Housing Authority. And we will also be having a hospital meeting as well. So if we may, if you may please have the roll call. Councilmember Cassidy?
Here.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Here.
Councilmember Sampson?
Here.
Mayor Protem Olson?
Here.
And Mayor Marshall? Here. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Put your hands over your heart and begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, in the ideal with liberty and justice for all.
And you be seated. We would like to take a moment to remember Ron Whitaker who passed away on Christmas Day, and we'd also like to pray for Xavier Gonzalez. Are there any announcements?
Yes. We had eight people pull papers and return them for a council seat, and three for the seat of mayor, and one for the city treasurer. So far I have received three names back from the counties saying their signatures were verified, so I'm just waiting for all the others to come in. We had a couple at the very last minute of the deadline, so it might be a few days before I get their signature verifications back. The last day to register to vote is on March 28th. And just as a side note, on January 21st is when the Secretary of State does the random drawing of the alphabet, and that's how your names appear on the ballot. That's not something I pick.
You didn't inherit that.
And are there any written communications?
None I'm aware of.
There are no presentations? Any city manager reports?
No.
Okay, city attorney?
Not tonight, other than we have Elizabeth Hall from my office who will be leading us in the housing discussion.
Excellent. Councilmember reports?
I quit tonight. I wanted to just say thank you so very much to city staff for a wonderful holiday end-of-year party. I think we all had a great time, but very thoughtful and very, very well put together. That's all I have.
Okay. So, councilmember Sampson?
Not tonight, thank you.
Mayor Protem Olson?
Just that I will be attending the League of California Cities Policy Committee, the Revenue and Taxation Committee, and the Community Services Committee Thursday and Friday in Sacramento. I'll report back.
Okay, that's all?
Yep.
Okay, and I will be attending marijuana conference this Friday in Los Angeles to find out a little bit more about marijuana and all the issues and upcoming initiatives and legislation.
Ma'am, I forgot. I'm going to one of those on Tuesday.
Okay, all right, thank you. Okay, I do have one item that I put on your desk a little late. It's something that just came up there. It had been brought to my attention a while back about some safety issues on Clemente Avenue. And so I met with Officer Williams and with Captain Federal on this, and they have provided a recap of the termination on that, on that street. There are a lot of young children that play on that street, and it is very congested with automobiles. So we were looking at options. One of the options they were talking is about putting some kind of small speed bumps, for lack of a better word, to kind of slow that traffic down. The discussion was to try this for a six-month period to see how that worked out. There also was a discussion and further on in the article is about the, is about the sign on Crescent that says you're not allowed to turn left prior to...
The Sombrero Fountain?
That's the word I was going to use, not the roundabout. And so there, we need to have a little discussion about, about that. Because I think that the concept is if people now are taking that quick left instead of going all the way around, that with the sign there now, it's a, it's a ticketable offense. So, and we're not even sure if anybody could give any insight on how that sign got there because it used to be a sign in the Sombrero itself. So, I don't know, it's, it's kind of up for, I don't know what direction you all want to take on that. If we want to give it to, back to Sheriff and Fire Department or go ahead to...
Well, at one time in the Sombrero Fountain, it said, "Left turn okay." So that got removed, and I think at one point when the DMV came over, they said that we should be using it for their drive test as a roundabout, but we can determine what we want.
Any comments? I know we're hitting you at last minute on this.
If we, perhaps what we could do is give direction to staff because there are other pending requests for safety concerns, one being the Vaughn's Crosswalk, the other being Beacon and Sumner, that are still not responded to. So perhaps we could bring this back for actually bringing over a traffic consultant. I know we've been talking about it for the last two years as part of the transportation goal. And that would look at all of these. We could add all of these as a concern.
Okay. Is that, is that the direction? Do we want that to take that long? Some of this, I'm concerned about how long this would take, and some are approaching and...
How about if I brainstorm with the Public Works Department and we'll see what we can come up with that wouldn't be maybe the speed bumps, but something else that would slow down the traffic?
Okay, I mean, that's fine. And then how do we address the, the Sombrero Fountain? Do we want, do you want to have that same conversation with, with perhaps Fire, Fire Law Enforcement and Public Works?
Yes.
Is that, is that...
I will.
Okay?
Okay. And then I'll report back to you guys.
Okay, thank you. And that's all I have. Oral communications? This is an opportunity from people in the community to speak on issues that are not on the agenda, and you will be limited to a three-minute time limit. And no decisions or actions will be taken.
Good evening, mayor and councilmembers. I am John King here representing the community for a better Avalon. I do need to deliver this to you, Denise. As our elected representatives, you are here to serve at the behest of the community, so it is appropriate that the community, your bosses, provide feedback on your performance. I've given Denise a sealed envelope with the performance results for each of you from 2015. Within the envelope, you will see a graph that illustrates the scores for council members one, two, three, four, and five on each of the nine traits that were surveyed. Only you will know which set of scores are yours. However, we do believe that we should honor exemplary performance, and so I will acknowledge the top performers for each of the traits that we surveyed. But at first, I do want to mention that this survey does not represent the entire community. Although our goal is to enlist every voter in Avalon to participate in our polls, we currently have 403 registered voters. But you can be certain that the people who do participate in our polls are also very active in the community, and so I hope you take their feedback to heart. All of the scores were measured against a five-point scale, and I did ask for input on these traits from all of you, as well as from a number of community members. Trait number one that we assessed was appears well-informed and prepared for council meetings. This is the only tie that we have tonight, but it was a tie. Their score was 4.13 on a five-point scale, which is a very high score, and that was between councilmember Olson and Cassidy, so congratulations. Trait number two, appears to reach out to the community to get input on important topics. Here, councilmember Cassidy scored highest with a 3.76 out of 5. Number three was listens to and is considerate of alternative viewpoints and opinions. Councilmember Olson scored 3.77 on a five-point scale on this trait. Number four, strives for transparency in representing the community. And again, councilmember Olson, at 3.74, was our top performer. Number five, has the ability to state opinions and positions clearly. Cassidy, with 3.96, was the highest scorer. Number six, seems concerned about the cost versus benefit in decision-making. And in this, councilmember Olson scored 3.99. Number seven was works well with other councilmembers and with staff. And again, councilmember Olson scored highest here with 3.79. And then finally, eight was recognizes the importance of the visitor population on the city's future. Cassidy with 4.15. And the last trait was to represent the greater good of the community in the voting, and Olson scored highest here with 3.92. The summation of all this, and as our highest performing councilmember in our survey, I'm proud, proud to announce that Ole Olson has earned the distinction of being our 2015 Councilmember of the Year for a Better Avalon. I want to thank you all for your service. I want to congratulate you, councilmember Olson. Show you a picture of your award and let you know that I'll be back on March 3rd because we did just close the poll today about 2:00. So we didn't know who was going to win. It was very close, I would say, but I will get this to you, and probably in your March meeting, I'm going to come back and we'll do a more formal presentation. So thank you all for your service.
Thank you.
Oh, and your envelopes are with Denise.
Okay, are there any other oral communications?
David Hart, Recreation Department. A little update, flag football for kids started this week at Joe Machado Field. We have over 70 kids, boys and girls, from third to eighth grade participating. We would like people to come up and watch the games, get your football fill on Sundays from 1:00 to 5:00 p.m. We also have kick-it-up dance classes that are going on right now. Started last week, but we are still taking registration. And this is also for boys and girls ages 3 to 16, for classes in ballet, tap, jazz, and hip-hop. Please call us at the Recreation Department, (310) 510-0220, extension 231, and we'll be happy to help you register your kids for dance. Also, we have adult boxing is back at Tremont Hall from Mondays 6 to 8, Tuesdays from 6:30 to 8. And that's with our very own Officer Floetry as the head instructor. For $100, that gives you six months of training, including your insurance, use of equipment, and the facility. And also, some of you might be wondering what's going on up at City Park, or otherwise known as Machine Gun Park. The Public Works Department has been preparing the playground space for some new playground equipment to be installed by game time. Work will be completed by, by this Monday, and we will have a ribbon-cutting ceremony, depending on whether it allows us to, but we will have a ribbon-cutting ceremony this Monday, January 25th, at 3:00 p.m. So come on out, bring your kids, and play on their new equipment. Thank you.
That's great news. And that's, that really came fast. Amazing. Yes?
Good evening, mayor, council. Jim Luchahan, Catalina Island, Chamber of Commerce and Visitors Bureau. At the start of the meeting this evening, I put at each of your spaces the newly released copy of the 2016 Catalina Island and Avalon Visitors Guide, and I just wanted to tell you that you're among the first to get it. However, we did give away 750 copies over the weekend at a trade show, but you're among the first of the islanders to receive it. And I'm happy to report that because of our success in selling ads in the guide this year, we had to grow it by four pages. That allowed us the freedom to acquire a lot of new images that you'll see for the first time here in the guide this year, and gives a more current depiction of our community for its evolution in the last couple of years. And we've printed 75,000 copies, and anyone in the community or any business owners who would like to have them, just let us know down at the Green Pier, and we'll get them to them right away. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you, Jim.
Thanks, Jim.
Other folks?
Not Dennis.
Good evening. Just wanted to brief you on the few projects we have going on, capital improvements. The fuel dock, finally, we got the asbestos removed, and the project is proceeding well. They started Wednesday of last week removing the asbestos. It's off the island, it's been wrapped and transported, and demolition started today. So we're back on track. We have about a five-week delay, but we're pretty confident that we're going to be able to pick up on that schedule. Contractors performing well, and everything looks good from here. On the recycled water master plan, you, this council and past management, had authorized us to start the studies of what we can do to bring recycled water to the island, and it's proceeding well. The engineers have been here three times. They've conducted site visits at the treatment plant and on the island itself. They've determined the location of how we're going to insert the recycled water into the saltwater system, which will serve it to the households and irrigation for whatever we need. We'll be able to wash cars, carts, water our grass, plants, and all of that. It's going to be great. There's several issues that we have to prepare for. You, as city council, has to be aware of this. Each reservoir will have to be covered in order to prohibit bacteria from growing. There's a lot of money that's going to have to be allocated for this, so I'm going to try to keep you informed as we go on with the studies. Your insight in leading the direction for this recycled water is complimentary, and we appreciate it. This island should have had this done a long time ago. Our saltwater system is, is deteriorating rapidly, and we need to get recycled water, excuse me, into the system as soon as possible. The third project is starting in a week and a half is Pedley Beach Road chain link fencing on top of the K Route. We have all the insurance documents in and the bonds, and we're now just waiting for the contractor to return a couple more items. We need to get his signed contract, and then we're going to issue him a notice to proceed, which hopefully will be at the end of this month or the first part of February.
Great.
Other than that, we're, we're all good, and we're proceeding.
Great. Thank you for the update.
You're welcome.
Good timing.
Perfect timing.
Good timing.
Oh, your three-minute timer. Wow. That was your phone call.
Other oral communications?
Chuck Martin, 352 Catalina. I posed a question to Ole, or Councilman Olson, one evening about the, we put out 350,000 gallons of water a day now with the new desal plant, and I guess there's some red tape as to why we can't come off rationing. And I'm just wondering, can the red tape, the red tape be addressed so that we don't have to keep rationing, or how long is this going to last if we don't get El Nino in here?
Red tape's red tape? No, Edison still hasn't received approval to use a new plant yet, and once they get that plan online, then it's our turn to talk to the PUC to look at a different way of allocating the rationing plan, because the surface water, I don't think matters that much, is what's in the oral plants and what's in the groundwater. So let's get it online so we have a dependable source, and then we can talk about changing the rationing plan.
That...
Yeah.
Yeah, that additional permit that was required was supposed to come through this week, so initially, initially, that's what they reported at a prior council meeting. So perhaps we could ask for an update from Edison officially that we could post?
They couldn't make the meeting tonight, so they were either going to be at the first meeting in February or the second meeting as scheduled.
That was three weeks.
Okay, yeah. If, if they're unable to make the first meeting, could we at least get some sort of communication that we could read for the first meeting? Thank you.
Yes. Others? Okay, we're going to be taking some of the items out of order because there are people that need to get on a boat. So we're going to start with item 10, which is the MTA Audit Financial Statement.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Councilmembers. The staff item was to include the MTA audit, but the audited report for MTA, for the MTA is not yet ready. And in, it was included in the staff memo because last year when Chris Wojcik presented the fiscal year 1314 financial statements, he included also the MTA audited statement. However, there's really no need for the city council to approve or adopt the MTA audit. It's an audit for MTA as verification that we're in compliance with the MTA programs. So it's been, that will not be included in tonight's presentation. However, the city's annual audited financial statement is ready for, to be published, and Jennifer Farr is with us tonight to present the report. Jennifer is a partner of the city's contracted audit firm, Davis Farr, and Jennifer will present the report.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, mayor and councilmembers. Thank you for having me here tonight. I have some excellent news to share with you tonight. I've been your auditor for three years now, and this was a very different conversation that we had three years ago than the conversation we're going to have tonight. So I have put together a short PowerPoint presentation to facilitate the presentation. Feel free to interrupt me at any time if you have any questions.
Thank you.
So I just wanted to start off with saying, I'm not exactly sure how long it has been, but you successfully issued your financial statements within six months of your fiscal year-end for possibly the first time in a very long time, so you should give yourself and staff a round of applause for accomplishing that. It's obviously great to have it done in a timely manner, and I think six months is about the standard that you would always want to have it done within that period. So you're right in line with, with other California cities on issuing your financial reports timely. This year, the audit opinion is an unmodified audit opinion, which is the highest level of audit opinion that you can receive. There is an extra paragraph added in the financial statements this year that alert the reader that there's been a change in the accounting standards. It's called GASB statement number 68, and it's actually a very big change for California governments, or actually all governments in the United States, because now for the first time ever, you're recording a pension liability in your financial statements that previously was only a disclosure requirement. So nothing has changed about your benefit programs that you offer to your employees. The only thing that has changed is that the accounting standards now require this liability to be estimated, calculated, and included on your financial statements. And I'm going to go into what that means for you guys. So now in your financial statements, you will have a new line item called net pension liability. The total is 7.5 million. What you can see that is if everybody quit today and you had no employees, this is an estimate of what you're going to have to pay for those employees' retirement for past service that they have provided the city. There are two new categories in your financial statements that previously were not there before you had assets, liabilities, and equity. Now you have two new categories, deferred inflows and deferred outflows, and those are associated with those new pension accounting issues. They're to help amortize certain, certain issues related to the net pension liability. And they show up on your, on the balance sheet with those assets and liabilities now. You'll also find a very expanded footnote disclosure on footnote six on those net pension liabilities, and it gets into the assumptions that were used in calculating that number and what a change in those assumptions would mean in terms of recording that liability. And then for now, you only have one year presented, but at the back of the footnotes, you have two new schedules that will eventually show 10 years' worth of trend information on your pension contributions and your net pension liability. So a couple of big changes to your financial statements as a result of this new standard. I wanted to, I'm going to get into the financial statement numbers a little bit, but I wanted to report back to you about internal control recommendations. This year, we had four recommendations, which is a significant improvement from the recommendations you've had in the past. And actually, a lot of these issues were, were kind of addressed before our audit was over, but since they showed up during our audit period, we reported on them. The first one, we do a test of 40 dispersments, and we found that you did not have the required purchase orders for five of those. If you recall, your purchase order limit says anything over $100, you have to have a purchase, a purchase order for. I will tell you, that's a little unusual and definitely on the low side, so I can see why it would be challenging to comply with that standard that's been set by the city. And then also, we had one that was just, was missing the approval. So we're looking at your, your purchasing policies and just asking whether or not you've complied with those policies. So it would probably be advisable to relook at your purchasing policies and those thresholds for requiring approvals as you go forward, because it might have, may have been a while since those numbers have been updated. The second one is an issue that's already been resolved. It's just the timing of the quarterly investment reports where the timing of the financial reports were a little late to you, but now they, they have been caught up. So three of four were late. It was the June 3015 period that was caught up, and so I believe you're caught up now. We're required to communicate to you any time we have adjustments detected during the audit. We had very few audit adjustments in comparison to prior years, but that comment is still in there. And lastly, this year, we did a special test on checks held for pickup. We wanted to see what your procedures were, if they were different, if you're tracking that carefully, and found that there could be some improvements in that area in terms of tracking. Although it's very rare to have checks held for pickup, we did have a recommendation to improve the, the internal tracking of that.
Can I just interrupt for a quick question before I lose my train of thought? I had a, a side note on the five of 40 dispersments tested. I'm assuming that you just took a random 40 samples, and that came back at about 12% hadn't followed the procedure. So my first question would be to the city, I'm assuming that we've addressed that, and could you give us a recommendation if $100 seems to be a low request for purchase order, what would seem the normal for a city of our size?
Yes, you're right. On the, the sample, we follow the auditing standards methodology, which says any time there's more than 250 transactions, you'd pull a sample of, of 40. It ends up being a representative population of the total regarding the dollar amount that would be appropriate. The best thing that I would do if I, if I worked for a city is utilize the CSMFO listserv to find out what other cities are doing. So it's the Californ, California Society of Municipal Finance Officers. There's a way that you can email out to a list of other finance officers and, and say, what are your thresholds? And then you'll likely get back 30 different responses, and that would be a good way to figure it out.
Okay.
I'm not sure I answered 100% of them.
No, you, you did. My concern was it was a random sampling of 40, and 12% of those came back as not having followed the city's own procedure. So if we were to take a larger sample, would it continue to be 12%? Would it grow? So just wanting to make sure that Finance Department has addressed how... Yes. How best to handle that. Okay. Okay, thank you.
So moving on to the financial statements, I apologize for the audience, it's a little hard to see these numbers up here. If you do have the financial statements in the, I don't know if it's in the agenda packet, it's on page seven of the financial statements, and it's the top section on assets. So I wanted to show you, this is all of the funds combined for the city. And just to point out, the total assets for June 30, 2015 were up to 49.6 million, and that represents a $16 million increase in your assets from the prior year. The biggest increases are in the areas of cash investments. You can see it's, it's about $6.6 million increase in cash and investments, and then the other large component of that is an increase in your capital asset. And then the other large component of that is an increase in your capital assets. This year, the successor agency of the old redevelopment agency filed paperwork regarding that, how they're planning to use property. And, and in that paperwork, there was no property that was going to retain with the successor agency. So as a result, there might have been projects where the redevelopment agency had paid for them in the past. Those assets are being used by the city, and so it was the right time to move those assets over to the city. So it's not that you constructed ten million dollars of new assets, it was really just getting them on the right books off the successor agency and now onto the city's books. Moving on to the liability section, your liabilities are, for all funds combined, are about fourteen million dollars. And really, when you look line by line, nothing really changed significantly from fourteen to fifteen, except for you will see that new line item at the bottom called net pension liability. So that seven point five million is the biggest change from the prior year. Overall, the equity of the organization of the city from fourteen to fifteen increased by about sixteen million, so positive increase in equity. And again, ten million of that is attributable to, to those assets moving from the successor agency of the redevelopment agency to the, to the city. It's important, important to look at the general fund. I always like to look at the general fund. It's your operating fund of the city. The money is generally not restricted in that fund, and is generally where your largest expenses are, although not, not always the case. So in the general fund, some more positive news for you. Your actual revenues were about nine point seven million dollars this year. That is one point one million higher than what they were a year ago. And they were also about one point two million dollars higher than what you budgeted, so both very positive things. The biggest increase is in the, the biggest number in that taxes line, and you can see the eight point six of actual revenue compared to a budget of seven point six. You can see that's where the biggest change is. There were increases, when you look at what, what's made up of tax, in taxes, there's increases in property taxes, increases in sales tax, increases in transient occupancy taxes. So across the board, improvements in all of the revenue, main revenue sources of the general fund. So I think those are all very positive trends that will likely continue. On the expense side, so revenues went up significantly on the expense side. You, the city did a good job of keeping expenses very consistent from fourteen to fifteen. Expenses were approximately eight point nine million, which is almost exactly what they were last year. I would be, take a, a little concern about the fact that the expenses went over budget. It's kind of a sign that you need to look at your budget processes to see if there's something that alerts you or flags you in the, in the system to tell you that you've exceeded budget in a certain area, so you can know that before you exceed the budget. However, that hundred and seventy-three thousand dollar overage is actually down from the prior year, so you can see that there's been some improvement in staying within budget on the expense side from the prior year. So in total, your revenues in the general fund exceeded the expenditures by nine hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars this year, and the ending equity in the general fund has moved up to five point seven million dollars. So you're definitely, everything in your financial statements for June thirty two thousand and fifteen is trending in a, in a positive way. Everything from an internal control standpoint, a timeliness standpoint, is trending in a positive way. So I'm very happy to give you a lot of very positive results, and I think you should be proud of where you are today compared to, you know, five, six years ago. So with that, that is all the prepared comments I have about the financial statements and the audit process. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Questions from council?
Nice to have a timely audit.
Very nice. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Any questions? Questions from the community? Okay.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Jennifer.
Thank you.
Counsel? There a motion?
Um, oh wait, now I got to find it again.
Well, I'll make a motion to receive and approve the audited financial statements for the fiscal year ending June thirty two thousand and fifteen and the accompanying reports.
I'll second.
Who moved and seconded? Call for the vote?
Uh-oh.
Uh-oh? Uh-oh's not good.
All ayes.
Now we will go to item number seventeen.
In your agenda packets, I just want to noted that we had sixteen first and seventeen, but we have to approve the loan part of it because it's on the ROPS, so the ROPS has to go second. So it's number seventeen first. And we have Elizabeth Hole here from Best Bested Creekers, and she works very closely with our consultants to get us through this redevelopment wind down process.
Good evening. Sorry about that. As you recall, we've been in the process of winding down the redevelopment agency for the past few years. During the course of the winding down, there's been some cash flow issues, and this agreement is designed to address one of those cash flow issues. It's a, an agreement that we've discussed with DOF already as a way to, thank you, as a way to facilitate resolving the cash flow issues in the successor agency that developed a few years ago. And I'm here to answer any questions if you have them.
Questions, counsel?
Hope we pay it back. Hope they pay it back.
Okay. Bishop? And counsel? Recommended action?
I'll make a, a motion to approve that the successor agency to the Avalon Community Improvement Agency and the City Council of the City of Avalon approve the agreement authorizing the repayment of a loan from the City of Avalon for the ROPS fifteen sixteen B.
Is there a second?
Second is a second.
Who moved and seconded? Call for the vote?
All ayes.
Item number sixteen.
So item number sixteen is the recognized obligation payment schedule. You've seen this every six months since the dissolution started back in twenty twelve. What's different this time is effective the first of the year. There was a change in the way the ROPS is done, and now we're only going to do it once a year. So this one covers from July first through June thirtieth of next year. If we need to make a change, we do have the opportunity to go back and make one change during the course of the year. So we'll keep an eye on it and make sure that everything's matching up with what we told them today, and if there's a change that needs to be done, we will do that. But other than that, it covers just your basic things that have been on there in the past. Debt service payments, your admin allowance, administrative budget type items, and this loan that you've just approved will be represented on there.
Just as a reminder, it, it goes for your review first, and then on Thursday, it will go to the oversight board meeting, and then it gets turned in by February first.
And we won't have to do it again for another year?
Ideally, yes.
Unless we do.
Hopefully, yes, we have never.
And if counsel will remember, one of the big items is that we were able to have the Pebble Beach Road improvements paid for by the state.
Yes. That was huge.
Counsel? First of all, community, you have any comments? Okay.
Motion? Motion?
Yes, please.
I move to adopt a resolution to the City of Avalon's successor agency to the Avalon Community Improvement Agency approving their recognized obligation payment schedule sixteen seventeen and the successor agency's administrative budget for the fiscal twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen.
A second?
Who moved and seconded? Call for the vote?
All ayes.
And right before we go into the consent calendar, there's a notification, an announcement I forgot to make. There will be a free marine navigation workshop to be held Tuesday, January twenty-sixth, seven PM at the Avalon Library. Dr. Allison Osinski will be leading that. There'll be information on the new boating licenses, and handouts and maps will also be included. So I'd like to see you all go out there on the twenty-sixth. Okay, thank you, Avalon Library.
Mayor, I also believe we were going to do item number eighteen, which is a housing authority.
Oh, yes.
Discussion?
Yeah, I'm sorry, since there was no...
So this item is before the council this evening because, as you know, we previously have put money aside for this program. We had several applicants come forward, and one of them particularly has identified a piece of property because, but there's some things in the guideline which don't allow us to disperse that money at this time, so we're bringing the guidelines forward to see if we can tweak them somehow. And Elizabeth Hole was very instrumental at the very beginning of all this, so she, we asked her to be here tonight for this topic.
All right. One more try. Sorry. Okay. Oh, okay. So there, a few years ago, back in around twenty twelve, twenty thirteen, we adopted a down payment assistance program. Oh, look, there it is. And so your current program that was adopted by the council was designed to provide down payment assistance to both low and moderate income residents. The maximum income of a person who could be eligible to be part of the program was a hundred percent, a hundred and twenty percent of the area median income adjusted for family size. The previous council put an assistance cap of two hundred thousand dollars. State requires that the payment made by the person who's buying the house be affordable, and I'll get into the definition of that in a minute. And then the property has to be owner occupied, and under the program that the previous council put into place, they had to close escrow within ninety days, being informed that they were prequalified or eligible under our program. It looked like they were going to meet the requirements, and so we gave them an authorization to say how much we had approved them for. And that then required them to find a property, get a traditional loan, and close within ninety days. We have found that the program doesn't work very well at times. Oh, that's really hard to read, sorry. So this chart shows you what the area median income is, and for discussion purposes, we use a four-person household in LA County. So the moderate family income for a four-person household means that they have to make sixty-four thousand eight hundred dollars or less last year to qualify for our program. So with that number in mind, when you can only make sixty-four thousand dollars a year, we've asked people to go out and look for a piece of property to buy. And then we have, under the program, capped the assistance at two hundred thousand dollars. And one of the things that's in the guidelines that the previous council had requested we include was that Avalon will provide five dollars for every one dollar that the applicant puts down as part of the down payment. So this five to one ratio is part of what's causing the problem, we've discovered, because the limitations we have found as part of the program is that, I know it'll be a shock to you guys, real estate's really expensive here.
Really?
So we're having a hard time finding real estate that's on the market that is at a price that works with all of the parameters of the program. The assistance that would be needed by someone who is low income, which is who the program's really geared for, not necessarily a moderate income person, but a low income person, a low income person doesn't have, if we give them two hundred thousand dollars, they may need another hundred or two hundred thousand dollars to put down as a down payment to then end up with an affordable housing cost at the end, once they have their loan and all of the other costs that go into it. Well, what we have found, not surprisingly, is that someone who qualifies as low income, who's making forty thousand dollars a year, doesn't have two hundred thousand dollars in the bank to put down. So the program's got this sort of inherent problem in it, in that the people who were trying to help with it can't meet the requirements. It may work for some moderate income people, but there's, again, not a lot of inventory. And from the city's perspective, you don't get the credits with the state that we're looking for on the regional housing needs assessment. You're not getting credit for those units, or you're getting a partial credit maybe, depending on the factors. So it's not necessarily meeting the goals of our program, and we're not actually being really able to help the people who we were trying to help. The housing cost allowance, or the affordable housing payment that they have to be able to make, that includes the principal, the interest, the taxes, the insurance, the HOA fees, the mortgage insurance, and then a utility allowance amount that is set by the county of Los Angeles. Tells us what that number is. So because the majority of properties here on the island often have both an HOA and a lease payment, that puts it over the amount to make it affordable under the program. What we have found is that if we take out the lease payment, because it's not included in the statutory definition, we may be able to qualify people, but then you're kind of setting people up for failure, because you're making the house cost more than they really can afford. And they're putting more of their income into the housing cost than you would really want a family to do.
Just a quick question. Are there still a lot of lease payment properties on the island? Other than, where are some lease payment properties?
Triana. It's probably the only one. Hamilton's not. Terry is not. Paul is not. Pius is not.
And it may just be the ones that are available for sale, seem to be the ones that have the lease payments. I don't know. That's just what our consultant and staffer are finding as they've tried to implement the program. So the affordable housing cost, just so you know, so with a median income of sixty-four thousand, using the, the moderate income person for a three-bedroom, or let's use a two-bedroom, they can only spend one thousand eight hundred and seventy dollars on their monthly payment. So you need the mortgage, the interest, the insurance, the HOA fees, the taxes, and the utility allowance, and the whole number can only come up to one thousand eight hundred and seventy dollars. So we have to provide, for this program to work, we have to provide enough assistance that with the down payment that person can afford to put down, the city fills in the gap in the assistance and their traditional loan that they get, their total payment, including insurance and everything, can only be one thousand eight hundred and seventy dollars. If you look at a low income person who we're trying to help, the payment drops to one thousand twenty dollars for a two-bedroom unit. So you can see how trying to get someone to fit these requirements, it's really hard with the way the program is structured. The other issue that we have found is state law requires that all the units end our program, because it's consistent with the state law, requires all units must be owner occupied, which is great, because we want to help people who are going to be here on the island. The limitation we have found is that seasonal employees want to rent out the unit when they're not on the island, when they're working off island for whatever reason. That doesn't qualify under the program, and so we can't help those people. Owner occupancy is a state requirement, so there's not a whole lot we can do about that part. There we go. The last, one of the last requirements is the ninety-day requirement. So under our program, you have to complete the city application process. So what they do is they submit an, an initial application. We go through it, it says, yep, it looks like you qualify, and you've asked for a hundred thousand dollars. So, okay, we'll set aside a hundred thousand dollars for you. Go, you have ninety days. So they have ninety days to complete our city process, which requires them to give us more documentation to really substantiate their income and that kind of information. Find a property, get a traditional loan, and close escrow in ninety days. It's a lot to ask of somebody in a short period of time, particularly in this market. What we have found is that generally, the bank loans are taking more than ninety days, because remember, you're talking about moderate or low income people, so there's a lot of requirements. Banks don't, what we have heard is that banks on the island don't really want to participate in this program. It's cumbersome, it's hard, and they just can't get everything done and meet the affordable housing cost, that eighteen hundred dollars or a thousand dollars if it's a low income person, in ninety days.
Elizabeth, is there a way for an applicant to complete the city process prior to working with the banks through the escrow process? Can you prequalify?
We could prequalify. The problem is, we don't know how much to qualify them for, because we're trying to fill that gap between their traditional loans. So we could say, we'll give you up to two hundred thousand dollars, our maximum. But then they have to go out and find a property and then qualify for a traditional loan. If they only need a hundred and fifty, we're only going to give them a hundred and fifty. If they need two fifty, which is what we're finding, we can't help them at that point, because we've capped out at two hundred, and the banks don't want to go through that process until they know our funding is secure, but we can't, we can't help it if they come in at more than two hundred thousand dollars, because that's the maximum on our program.
So essentially, a lot of these guidelines, we've already established as part of the state program. So in order for, these are things that we would have to look at changing as a city before going forward.
Yep. The only one that you really can't change is the owner occupied.
So we could, for example, extend this to a hundred and twenty days, a hundred and fifty days? So we could, for example, extend this to 120 days, 150 days?
Exactly.
Okay.
And you could increase your amount of assistance from 200 to 300,000, whatever you want to do.
Right.
Those are the things you have control over.
Okay.
And then, the real issue, from what I understand from staff, is just the lack of available properties in the price range that works. There's a really limited supply of housing on the market in the, in the town that meets the, all of these requirements. And so they have found that the project, the program just is not really working very well. So that's sort of the overview of where your program is at, and I think, I don't want to speak for Ms. Al, but I think what we're really looking for is some guidance from the council on, do they want to adjust some of these factors? Do you want to just decide that this program isn't working and scrap the whole thing and come back and look at what to do? You have about $4.5 million in housing funds available to you, plus I think you still have a few properties. So you have, you have some options as to what you want to do if this program isn't the right one for the city at this point.
One option that we've, the previous councils have discussed in the past is, because you have this money, $4.5 million, there are developers out there that would be interested in doing a project, and what you could do is you do like a notice of availability of the funds, and the developers come in, they bid for it, and they say, "If you give us this, we'll, we'll build this many houses, we'll build this many apartments. This is the kind of product that we will give you. It doesn't cost you anything." You just say that, you know, you kind of like go fishing. "We've got this money, how would you use it? Comes back to you as an agency, and you can determine how to spend it." But right now, we, you don't have that option, because we haven't been asked to go out to the market and see what these developers will do. And there are developers out there.
There were, you asked us, gosh, maybe a year, a year and a half ago, just to call around to some of the housing developers that we've worked with in the past, just to get a feel if anybody would be interested in coming to the island, because we understand, you know, it's a different market, it's a different place to build. And just in sort of general conversations, gosh, maybe it was more than that now, maybe it was two or three years ago, I don't remember. But people, there were people out there who, I think if we put a NOFA out, a Notice of Funding Availability, we probably would get some response, but there are limitations, of course, because there are challenges on the island. Construction on the island is different.
The, this is kind of just reaching out there, but those units that we have on East Whitley, could those be converted into condos and then sold? Or we buy, or we buy a triplex, convert them to condos, and then sell them?
Well, okay, the issue there is, is they are currently paid for with your housing money. So anything you do with them currently, if you keep it within the housing authority, whoever the occupier has to be a low-income person.
Right.
That's the thing. There is always the option of selling that property to the city, for instance. Then you remove the affordability covenants. The money goes into the housing authority for, you add it to the $4.5 million that you have right now, so you can do a bigger project. And then you would, I would assume, because you don't have that money lying around, that you would finance the cost of that over 30 years.
So the city could get a loan?
Yes.
Buy the property?
Correct. You, the city would buy the property from the housing authority, the city could use it for, again, that eliminates the income requirements for those that would occupy. You could use that to rehabilitate, make it available. The money then goes into the housing authority, you can spend that on a bigger project, where, again, you can also, there's many things you can do with housing authority money. It's not just owner occupied. You can also use it for rental properties. You can do rental assistance.
Right.
You know, again, it's up, it's up to the council, but there is that option.
But I mean, I think I would be interested in looking at the feasibility of us doing something like that with East Whitley, or if we, you know, there's a triplex for $700,000. Well, you divide that by three, that's two, whatever, you'd make some little improvements on there, we condo it out, and they buy the condos, that would perhaps be more affordable than what's already out there. I don't know, and...
So you certainly can do a rehab project, which is what it sounds like you're describing, finding a property here on the island that already exists, going in and rehabbing it, and then either selling it or renting it. There are affordable housing, excuse me, developers who actually specialize in that, who will come on the island and partner with you, and bring that expertise as to how to do that, and find properties, and then they'll manage it for you, so that the housing authority doesn't have to stay in sort of the long-term landlord position, because many housing authorities find that they really don't have the staff or the expertise to be in that position. So they enter into a long-term lease, or sell the property to the housing developer, and have them develop it, and then restrict it with a covenant, and they do that rehab and rent out or sell those properties. So yeah, those are certainly options that you could look at.
Okay.
The only downside is we do have a common conversion ordinance that requires it to kind of like be brought up to tip-top code, and you've got to sprinkle it, and you've got to, you know, the cost of conversion might be prohibitive. I think we have to explore that.
We, and I would like to think that some of these places that are currently apartments should be sprinkled already, right?
New construction.
Yeah.
I mean, how long ago did we start that they had to be sprinkled?
Way back, yeah, way back.
Oh, so...
So it's 25% of your, dependent if it's a duplex.
Okay.
25% single-family dwellings, 50% of reconstruction for it. It kicks off the sprinkler.
Okay. For example, do we have sprinklers in East Whitley?
Nope.
No.
Okay. But there might be another duplex or triplex that has something like that already going on.
But again, that's the kind of thing where if you put out a notice of funding availability, then you would get those types of developers, and they'll come in and they'll do that, like, work for you, and they'll go see what's on the market and what they might be able to secure, and what those sprinkler requirements are, and what those costs are, and then they'll come back to you with a proposal. Because that's what, they go from town to town and do that type of work as affordable housing developers.
Didn't Mr. Flynn give us a demand report for low and mod, for the project he was trying to do?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear what you said.
Mr. Flynn was directed to give us a report on the demand for low-mod units?
He did do a market analysis.
He did?
A few years ago. I, I have not looked at it recently, but I'm sure that we have it here somewhere and can provide it to you.
See how many people we can satisfy.
And how many applications have we either turned down or kind of in limbo?
I think we have three or four pending, four pending.
Only one's found this property.
But only, only one has identified a piece of property.
And I think the, I think we've actually gone through and actually put three or four people into homes, up mainly at that Triana. So it has worked, it worked, it worked early on, I guess, maybe eight years ago.
Right.
Yeah. Of the four we have pending, I think only two are really considered somewhat viable. I think one of the applicants only asked for $10,000 or $20,000, which, you know, when we look at the housing prices, that just doesn't seem like it would be a realistic amount of assistance based on our experience and what we've provided to units. But I think we have one or two that, really one at this point, that's still in the mix.
So to participate, oh, I'm sorry.
I don't know if you want to say that.
So to participate for the one that's pending that has a property, what we need to do is look at changing our regulations right now, the five-to-one ratio, increasing that, and then changing the 90 days to potentially a...
180 days.
180 days.
And then raise the fee back.
And I, I can't speak to what the assistance level is.
What did you say, it was 200,000?
Right now it's at 200,000. I'm not sure if, if that works for our current applicant.
Honorable mayor, members of the council, Al Ward, planning consultant, what I would suggest would be the following. Number one, drop the one-to-five ratio. Stick with a conflicting requirement of the guidelines. It says a minimum 3.5% down payment. The unit we're looking at could probably sell for $480,000. The owner is willing to sell for about $450,000. The applicant, who was asked for the maximum allowable at 200,000, can come up with that down payment, can come up with a down payment, which would be approximately $15,570. With the 200,000, could probably make it fly. It's within, it's within her grasp. I think, in looking at the guidelines, the myth becomes a reality, because there's a, there's an exercise or an example that's given in the guidelines. It's based on a $240,000 purchase price. It works at 240. Find me a decent inhabitable unit for $240,000. You might put a first-time home buyer or a single parent with two children in a home, I've seen it done over town. There's $150,000 worth of work to be done, and it's a sham. That first-time home buyer is left with a home that's unsuitable for habitation. Let's not do that. I think with these parameters, and you've got a minimum 3.5% required already, the other thing the guidelines indicate is, we don't expect a lower-income household to totally deplete their savings. In this case, it would be depleted, and I think she's willing to do that. But it says they should be allowed, and there's another conflict, to retain $10,000 or six times, six times the monthly rent. In this case, the current rent, six times that rent, comes out to $12,000 at 2, 2,000 a month, a monthly rent. That means she shouldn't have to give up anything. She should be able to retain $12,000. She's willing to deplete what she has. The whole purpose of having them have that, that amount of savings is a rainy day fund, illness, wonders what kind of tragedies could befall them. You're going to totally strip them of any of their assets and leave them bare if they have to cough everything up.
But is that us, or is that the lender?
Pardon?
Is that us, or is that the, the lender?
These are the program guidelines. The other thing that you touched upon...
These are our program guidelines.
You touched upon it very nicely, kind of a catch-22. And as Elizabeth's touched upon, the 90 days to go out, find a unit, come in, and we pre-qualify these households, they're all income-eligible, there are four of them, but to go out, to find a unit, to get the pre-qualification, which shows, here's how much they could afford on their own, hence, yes, they should get up to $200,000, and they can buy the unit. Any lender that knows this program well knows, I can go through the pre-approval process, you know, anybody should be able to go and ask for pre-approval, but they know, yes, this is the pendant, she could probably purchase the unit with that assistance, given the program guideline, she's not going to get it. Why should we waste the time and effort on the part of our loan officers to do a pre-approval when they're not going to qualify anyway? It's a catch-22. Anyway, I'm, I'm taking up too much time.
So let me just make sure that I'm clear on that. It is our program requirements that are requiring the six months.
It requires 90 days right now, and I tell you, the 90 days for these applicants who are pre-qualified on July 1, that 90 days ran out months ago.
I'm sorry, I meant for the, the six months' worth of mortgage payments.
It says that they should be allowed to keep six months, the lesser of, the greater of the two, $10,000 or six times their current monthly housing cost. And I looked at monthly housing cost in this case as not being all-inclusive. Elizabeth was correct, there's more than just rent. The rent alone in this case was $2,000. I can point out, people to you over town, who with, and it's kind of, it's just the irony of it, you've got renters who are paying 2,000 a month, I know people who have homes, three-bedroom, two-bath homes, they came up with a down payment and are funding 30-year, 3.5, 3.75 mortgages, I know they've gone up a bit, 30-year fixed, paying maybe 2,200 a month with tax impounds at the same time. It's a dilemma.
So then, Elizabeth, if, if our program is requiring the six months, and in a typical situation, you know, Fannie Mae, Freddie Mac is only requiring two months, do you know why we would be requiring six months for our program?
I don't think our program requires it. It recommends it.
It recommends it, okay.
What we do require is a minimum of a 3.5%, 3.5% down payment by the applicant.
Right.
But then we also have to have this, we also have this five-to-one ratio requirement in there, and those appear to be in conflict. So if we took away the five-to-one ratio?
Right.
And just have the 3.5%? We could keep the, the recommendation that they not deplete their savings and have, you know, a rainy day fund, but as in, you know, some applicants' cases, they may not have that much money, and they may be willing to take that risk. If we increase the cap, then we could cover more, and they may not need to, to deplete all of their savings. That's the policy call that...
Well, I think I would rather see it more in line with a, with a mortgage lender. You know, I don't want to see somebody completely deplete savings to be able to do this, because, you know, who knows what's going to happen in 30 days? But if we could align that better, where it wasn't such a great amount, I'd rather recommend the two months versus six months. But I guess what we have to determine as a council first is whether or not we want to continue with the program.
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, certainly I do.
I think, I think we've got to extend the escrow period, I think we've got to remove the five-to-one, I think we have to look at the $200,000 maximum and see, is that a reasonable number, or is it, should it be 250?
So that's where you eliminate the five-to-one ratio and just go to 3.5%.
And is 250 adequate? I'm looking at you, Al.
I think that's what you were saying, even at 240 was adequate, but so 250 would be a little...
What I did was on the five-to-one, for the one situation I'm referring to or aware of in some detail, it would require, the five-to-one for 200,000 would have required $40,000. I'd be hard-pressed to find, for someone needing 200,000 in assistance in order to purchase that, that home, and homes in this case would be condominiums, not, not single-family, but $40,000, they just don't have that kind of asset.
Well, I think what we're suggesting, Al, is that we'd eliminate the five-to-one, only have the 3.5%, and then is the $200,000 cap sufficient, or should they consider increasing that to 250 to give a little bit more flexibility?
I'd say, maybe provide a little latitude there, but maybe it to 200, it would look feasible. I didn't, I'm not, I'm not a private lender, but the 200,000, it, it could reach a unit, 250 would be better yet.
Okay.
In looking at sales data, in looking at sales data, I saw one unit that sold for $375, a one-bedroom condo over the last year. I think it was CIVR data, a printout that they had, of sales activity. You're talking more in terms of for 50 and probably for units within the community. That may have been an anomaly, the one unit I saw. So even more than 200 would be probably advisable. The four households combined have asked for $350,000. One of them, as Elizabeth pointed out, I don't think the applicant has any idea what the housing market is like, to ask for $20,000, and she is low-income, maybe even, she's low-income, but anyway, yeah.
So, Al, the four applicants totaled 350?
350, and we do have 500,000. We could meet all their needs on the surface. We have not heard, we have heard from two on a somewhat periodic basis. We probably should find out where the other two stand. They may have already found something, or may have decided to proceed differently. One of them, in fact, was a moderate-income household, but they, they are eligible. I think they asked for 80,000.
Is there any restrictions on, let's say I'm a family of eight, and I buy a one-bedroom unit, that's all I can afford, and I put eight in there, do we, do we, we have something to say about that?
There are, well, you have general overcrowding rules, so they couldn't, we couldn't put in a family into a bad situation like that.
Okay.
That wouldn't happen.
So that's all part of the, in the process?
That's all part of it.
Okay. Is this something we can change today, or do we have to bring it back for more study or whatever?
I think you can give us direction, and we'll bring back the guidelines at the next meeting for on-consent calendar for the housing authority for your approval. That would then take care of it, we could go forward, we could start to work with those people. What I would also ask the authorities' permission is that may take care of the 500,000 that we have allocated under the ROPS. You still have the $4 million plus whatever you have in Whitley. What we'd like to do is just go out there and just ask what people would like to do with that money, bring back options for the council. You don't have to decide, but it's at least giving ideas, including the, the sale of Whitley to the city and, and use those funds for other redevelopment. Doesn't really cost you anything, we're just going to go out there to some low-income housing, they'll come back with you, and that'll get the ball rolling in terms of looking at whether the best use of the money is single-family homes, condos, or some kind of rental assistance that they can help with. that they can help with. Again, we just want to ask, ask developers out there, they come to you, they do like a dog and pony show and you can decide whether you want to use this money or not. It doesn't cost you anything other than, you know, writing up the thing and saying, "Give us a proposal."
Okay, so it seems like we have some consensus on direction. Is there other comments though? Community want to comment at all?
Hello, my name is Laura DeMille, 64 Sal Vista. I'm the person that's trying to get my condo. I've been working on this since June. I got my paperwork in when I was supposed to get it in. Like Al said, it's, I've gotten a lender, I've also went to US Bank, I've also gotten a lender, but the lender won't approve me until the city approves me. And it just keeps going back and forth. I really want my home. My landlord's been very, very patient, she's a wonderful person, but it's been going on for a long time and I really need to buy my house. I really love this program and I appreciate it all. So, and like Al said, that five-to-one, it's for someone that's low, you know, income, you can't come up with $20,000. So I do have, you know, partial down payment and I will hustle and hustle to make whatever else I need. But I really hope you can decide and decide quickly because my housing is now being affected because of it.
Okay.
So, thank you very much.
Appreciate it. I think we're working on it.
We did, yeah. That's the direction we gave.
Okay. Elizabeth?
So I think we have direction to amend the program guidelines and to issue the...
Notice of Funding Availability.
Notice of Funding, NOFA.
NOFA.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, Elizabeth. And now we will go to the consent calendar.
Where are we? I've got papers everywhere now.
Seeing the computer just paged up and down.
We have nine items on the consent calendar this evening. We have actions from the December 1st and December 15th regular city council meeting. We have warrants for your approval and in the warrants there, I mean in expenditures there's warrants, there's electric fund transfers and four payrolls for a total amount of $1,774,457.12. Item three is the adoption of a resolution accepting the treasurer's report for fiscal year 2015-16 second quarter. Recommended action is to adopt the resolution accepting that report. Number four is the approval to rescind the full-time employee hiring freeze. The recommended action is to make the determination to rescind that full-time hiring freeze. Number five is a request to the encroachment permit at 119 Sumner Avenue for outdoor dining. That's at the Avocado Cafe. And the recommended action is to approve that encroachment permit and that is for two tables and two chairs. Number six is authorized to send a letter of support to the Los Angeles County's Pharmaceuticals and Sharps Collection and Disposal Stewardship Ordinance. We were asked by the county to consider this. Recommended action is to send a letter to the Los Angeles County Board of Supervisors saying that we support that. Number seven is to approve the agreement with John Minch and Associates Incorporated for on-call archaeological consulting services. And recommended action is to approve that agreement with them so we can provide on-call consulting services to the community. Number eight is to adopt the Drug-Free Workplace Act and Transportation, Department of Transportation Drug and Alcohol Testing Policy, Policy P1 and Resolution. Recommended action is to adopt the resolution and policy to replace and update the city's current drug and alcohol policy. Number nine is to amend the Avalon Municipal Code, Chapter 5-20, to limit cultivation of medical marijuana in the city. This ordinance was introduced and waived at the last city council meeting, so the recommended action is to adopt this ordinance, amending the municipal code to limit cultivation of medical marijuana in the city.
Okay, council, what is your pleasure? Do we have a motion on any of these consent items?
I would like to pull number seven for discussion. And I know that there are members of the audience here to speak on nine, so I'll pull number nine.
I'd just like to comment on five, Avocado Cafe. I'm into outdoor dining. I just want to say that if there's anybody here from the Avocado Cafe, just make sure that when three people sit at a table or four, you put the chairs back. I don't have a problem with this at all. It's just people get out on the sidewalk there and then the public can't get by, so that's the only request I'm making on number five.
Any other items want to be called? Okay, it is...
Move staff on one to six and eight.
And nine?
No, nine is pulled.
Oh, nine's pulled?
Yeah.
Okay. I'll check in there.
Kids, we've moved in second. Comments? Call for the vote?
Accidentally voted. I voted.
All eyes?
Okay.
I voted.
Um, that's pretty amazing. Okay, we're going now to item number...
Seven.
Seven.
Did he pull five?
No, he just, Joe just made the comment, wanted to make the request to make sure it got moved around.
Well, he was on five, I just have a quick comment. Did the fire or planning review that at all? Did they come up with a plan?
Yes.
They did, and fires approved it and the planning department?
They were, yes.
Okay, okay. I'm sorry.
It's identical to what's down there at original Antonius.
Yeah, okay.
My questions could be very quick on seven. So, Al, this one's for you. This is regarding the agreement with John Minch and Associates to provide on-call archaeological consulting services. Why are we required, who's requiring us to have an onsite archaeologist?
Because we have a very culturally enriched area down there and we've, because the major problem we had with the Edison vaults when they were placed in.
Right.
And other excavations that have happened where we've had to call in archaeologists to come in and monitor the site. And when we redid our fee schedule, I think a few months ago, we placed the $3,500 fee in there. So when somebody comes and pulls an excavation permit and if it's in one of the sensitive areas, they have to give us that deposit. And so if they come across something, an archaeologist, the firm is called and they do all the work on that.
Okay, so I understand all that and I remember all that. I'm wondering, is this something that the state has determined or who, which agency has determined that we're culturally rich and we need to have the consultant?
Well, it is, okay. So, you're culturally rich because of the fact that you have artifacts within the city limits that we continually run in when we do excavations. And there's a state program now that requires you to have this program. And so we've developed the program as required by state law. And now what we want to do is, we want to have someone who is familiar with your program and the area so that when things occur, they're not scrambling around trying to find someone, they can know someone who knows the area. And again, it's paid for by the developer. City doesn't pay for this. This is paid for, it's in your, so for instance, for instance, when Vaughn starts to work, if they're digging and they, you know, they're going to have to reimburse the city for this work if, you know, something occurs.
So then, does this, is this required for every time we dig? So all the holes along Front Street Crescent Ave, that, the little holes here and there? Each time we dig, we have to have a representative there?
Well, no, it's not, go ahead.
You will. The excavation permit form has been expanded to include a discussion of the Cultural Resources Management Program, which stems from the General Plan and its related Environmental Impact Report. There will be a map attached to the excavation permit that identifies the areas that are subject to this requirement. Most of them are in the flats, upslope areas not necessarily so. Elsewhere, it's excavator beware if something's encountered, they contact us, the local Gabrielino Tongva representative on island will visit the site. The areas are defined, it's not the entire city.
Okay, so for example, these, the current spots of excavation on Crescent. We have, I believe it's an Edison project happening right now and then there's also another one.
We had an observer. It's to the point that once, as the excavation's occurring, they reach their depth, they're doing utility work, what have you. Once that they've reached the maximum depth, nothing's discovered, the observer's gone, there's no longer a need for monitoring, they can backfill after that point. I believe we encountered that at the, what, a couple of locations just recently on Crescent.
Okay, okay, so that's what I'm asking about.
And do we have a representative over here?
Yeah.
Yeah, I know, Gabe, but is he working for this company? Is this company he's working for?
On?
Gabe, a representative?
Yes.
We do, okay.
Yes, on island.
Okay, thank you.
Well, for us, does he need to hop a boat, incur time and expense, he's here.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
And then my other concern was is the agreement is requiring both an archaeological and a Native American monitor? So it's two persons or is one person can be both consultants?
Step two, the one is a trained professional, fully certified archaeologist. The Native American monitor is there to determine when something is, if something is discovered, it's usually a two-person team that's there. When something is uncovered, is it of significance to the local Native American population?
And I guess my only other concern with the contract itself was that there was no, I guess it says whenever either of the parties here to elect to terminate the agreement. So there is, there's no termination on the agreement. We just, it doesn't really, unless I missed it when reading.
It can be terminated at will.
At will, okay. That's the piece I was looking for and I didn't see at will, so.
Okay. Council?
So with that, I would make a motion to approve the agreement.
Move in second. Note for the comment? Call for the vote?
All eyes.
Item number nine is the second reading of an ordinance which would allow cultivation of medical marijuana by persons with the medical marijuana card. This is in response to a state law that provided that cities have until March 1st to impose regulations on the cultivation of marijuana. If cities do not impose regulations by March 1st, the state law provides, governs. What the state law allows is for six mature and 12 immature marijuana plants to be cultivated by people with the need for medical marijuana. What the council did at the last meeting was it decided that it would allow cultivation, but it cut by half the limitations of the state. So while the state allows six and 12, you allow three and six. So you cut it in half. By enacting this ordinance, the city of Avalon will have entered into the field of regulation for the cultivation of medical marijuana. What that means is, under state law, you can further regulate it at another day. In other words, because you enacted some regulations, you could in the future decide to lower the number of plants, you could in the future decide to ban cultivation altogether because you have something on the books, because you started to regulate, you took some action. If you did not do anything, in other words, if you decide not to regulate at all, take any action, whether to ban or to partially allow or to allow up to the state limits, if you do nothing, and assuming that the March 1 date still remains, that you will not have the ability to regulate. The state law governs and you will lose local control. So what this is a matter of is state law basically said, we're going to take control unless cities act by March 1st. So the city council at the previous council meeting exercised local control by looking at the cultivation and you came up with your own standards. You put them in the ordinance, this is now for the second reading. If this goes into effect, the ordinance goes into effect 30 days from today, which is before March 1st. So you're complying with state law because you've regulated. Any questions? I would say, if you read a lot of the city blogs, pretty much every city in the state of California is taking some action. Some cities are allowing cultivation, some are banning it entirely. And so there's a split among cities as to what cities are doing. It differs in terms of the part of the, the part of state you're in and the local culture. But all cities across California are scrambling to meet this March 1 deadline. So I apologize for having you scramble, but I wanted you to have the ability to exercise some local control.
I think I just got confused because if I heard correctly at the last two meetings that we discussed this, we could, I believe what I heard was we could not go further stringent with our rules.
No, no, the exact opposite. You can't be more liberal. In other words, state law says 12 and 16, you couldn't decide to do 24 and 12. The state limits are the maximum and you could go less than that.
No, I'm sorry. I believe what I heard you say was if we were to say no cultivation, we could come back after a study period and say, okay, we would be willing to allow two, three, four, five, up to six immature, or six mature or 12 immature. But you couldn't, but if we were to enact in the ordinance that said the maximum of three mature and six immature, we could not then at a later time come back and say no cultivation?
No, you could. You could, as long as you've taken some action to regulate.
Cindy, I had to clarify that with him today too because that's what I was kind of hearing in my mind. And so then when I read it here, though, it talks about, yes, we could go back and ban.
Okay.
Yes, you could go, as long as you've taken some action to regulate it. You could ban it, you could allow up to what the state does. Again, it's up to the council.
So as an alternate to the ordinance that we're considering, we could have prohibition at the present time and a minute later.
You could do that, yeah. You'd have to, you'd have to do a first reading of an ordinance and then you'd enact it at the next meeting as well as on an urgency basis to make certain it is in place by March 1st. Again, assuming that the deadline is not extended, there's some legislation pending to extend it because it was not something that they had intended when they passed it, but it's the way it's written, so.
What's their deadline?
Well, they're trying to get it done by the end of this month.
No, I know, of the new legislation, if they change it.
But again, it hasn't passed yet, so. We have to assume that the state law as currently written is what governs.
Okay. Well, since there are people from the community here, would anybody like to get up and speak?
Hello, I'm Judy Hibbs, 157A Crescent Avenue, and I'm asking you to just say no. Let's not go down this road, let's not open this door. We're a family community and I'm urging you to start with a strong message, no cultivation. There's no shortage of marijuana in this town. You smell it everywhere you go, the visitors, the downtown area, even during the women's forum wine tasting, you could smell somebody with smoking pot somewhere. There's in neighborhoods, near our school, out hiking in the hills. This is, this legislation is designed to help those that are sick and dying, but the sick and dying won't be the ones who are cultivating these plants. It'll be the people who sent their $45 in on the internet and got a medical marijuana card. And they're going to grow more than they need and so they're probably going to share or sell. And this will become a legacy that we will not be able to get rid of. Your proposed ordinance says the possession of a minimum of eight ounces of processed marijuana. That's a lot of marijuana. If you're sick and injured, you're not going to have the time or the funds or the equipment... or the, uh, equipment to grow, as we heard at the council meeting last time, there's a lot of danger with processing marijuana, there are explosions, there are fires. Do you want that next to your home? Do you want to not know what's going on? Who's going to be policing these growers? Who's gonna be checking if we vote for three mature and six immature plants? The sheriff's department has already said that they've never arrested anyone for cultivating marijuana, and I can't see that they're going to be going door to door and checking on everyone's growing season. Um, the problem here is that we have a drug and alcohol problem already in this community, and we don't need to go down this path. This would be a new industry, industry for Catalina, is this the quaint village that we want to project, that we're cultivating marijuana and that we're selling drugs? And also, the, uh, violence and crime that goes along with drug sales is nothing that we want to dismiss. We took an awful long time to decide about bonds and the impact that it would have on the neighborhoods, but yet we're rushing to say, well, let's pick a number, 3, 6, 9, 12, whatever it is, and let's grow some pot. I urge you to be thinking about this very carefully. It's easier to say no and then change your mind if you do an impact study, which I would urge you not to do, but if you insist on it, and let people speak out about this. This is an election year, this is an important vote, the majority of people in town do not want this ordinance passed, and I urge you to vote no.
Good evening, Michelle Bray, 310 Clemente. I stand before you tonight on behalf of countless community members who either couldn't be here tonight or weren't allowed to speak in a public forum because of their job restrictions. Tonight you have the opportunity with a second reading of the Medical Marijuana Cultivation Ordinance to put a ban on cultivation in our community entirely. I noticed in the last council meeting that the word ban was rarely used or was referred to as the most conservative choice. We don't want this in our town. Many other communities surrounding ours, for example, the Los Salim, the Los Angeles County Board of Supervisors is banning this, is voting this week to put a ban on cultivation as well, until further studies are analyzed. We should consider following in their footsteps. I think the average citizen in Avalon is unaware of the issues surrounding the misuse of medical marijuana, I know that I certainly was. This has been such an interesting process, um, becoming knowledgeable on the subject. It would be easy to think, oh, that's so cool, a natural plan is helping the critically and terminally ill. If the use stopped with those truly in need, then there would be nothing for us to talk about. I think we all would support it. As we learned from the last city council meeting, when this topic was voted on and discussed, the use and issuing of medical marijuana cards and medical marijuana recommendation papers have been completely misused. There is less than one citizen in this entire town that has a legitimate state license card, with only 425 as of October 2015 in the entire Los Angeles County that has a population of 10.2 million people. The rest are medical marijuana recommendations, so important to distinguish the difference, issued by doctors that are out for profit and willing to give anyone and everyone a recommendation. They have offices set up where all they do is prescribe marijuana and nothing else to anyone 18 and older, I called one today. And all you need is a heartbeat to qualify, be over 18 and 40, and have $45 to give them. I even asked them if they prescribe anything else, if these doctors are prescribing any other kind of medicine, and they said no. So this is completely set up for this industry. Once you have that recommendation letter, you are free to go by your dispensary of choice and pick up your eight ounces of marijuana at that time. For those of you who might be wondering how much eight ounces would be, if you were the regular person getting high a few times a day, you would use around two ounces a month. And so eight ounces for the average person should last you around four months. That being said, you can go to one dispensary and get eight ounces, you can go to another dispensary and get eight ounces. Is there really a three-minute for this, too?
That's your three minutes.
Okay, I'm almost finished. So knowing that a huge chunk of people in this town have the Medical Marijuana Recommendation Paper and use it for recreational use, not for an ailment, under the protection of this ordinance, they too would be able to cultivate. With more and more people getting the Medical Marijuana Recommendation Paper, this has the potential to become an even bigger problem. As we know, cultivation in this town will produce a trickle-down effect that will inevitably end up in the wrong hands. This is by no means an attack on those who are critically or chronically ill. I want the community and the council to think about the options available to those truly in need who have chosen marijuana as their medical choice. I have listed three options, but since I'm out of time, I think most of us would agree that the critically ill would not take up the science of cultivation, but this ordinance leaves the door wide open for those with less desirable aspirations to do as they will. I think we need to consider the overall impact allowing any drugs in our community and the social problems this will produce. Please vote to ban cultivation in our island community.
Thank you for your comment.
Father Roberto Peroni, St. Catherine Parish, and not only was I invited to a meeting with the Honorable Mayor President and, and Pastor Enrique and various others and the, uh, Sheriff's Department, Human Resources, dealing with the problem we know all about of the youth and drugs and alcohol. And I didn't know this, of course, I'm recent in the island, that behind the casino, that's where that happens. And so I walked over there to check it out. And there were kids drinking beer, getting drunk, and there were other kids rolling big marijuana leaves to stunk to high heavens and smoking. So it's true, I've seen with my own eyes, and of course, I'm not a police officer, I couldn't do anything about it, I just note, and I've gone back on many occasions, and every time I go there, same thing. So the city was concerned about stopping this somehow, and I agree 100%. But this seemed, this proposal seems to contradict that, because the fact is the kids are getting this stuff somehow via adults, I presume. Either someone's buying the beer for them, and then somebody has some marijuana getting it for them, whatever it happens to be. So if there's cultivator in the house, as next-door neighbor, that kid could say, hey, can you give that some of this stuff? Well, sure, here it is, kid, it's gonna happen. So we can't talk at both ends of our mouth, we don't want this, but we're allowing it. So if the city is serious about helping our youth, which is our future, I really recommend no growing of medical marijuana on the island for any reason at all. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Hi, my name's Enrique, pastor of Seating Waters. I'm also on the board of Choices, um, football coach, involved with the different things in the community. I came here back in 1986, um, was called by folks at the community church to help them start the teen center. So I was the first, uh, young man to come in and start this. And the reason they, they called for me to come was because of the drinking problems that were going on here in this community, and they were concerned. They wanted to give the kids an alternate place, alternative, so that they would not feel the pressure to go and do the things that they were doing. So here we are 29 years later, and we're having a conversation in this room, wondering if it's okay to pass this ordinance to allow people to be able to, you know, secure, um, marijuana for their personal use. But as we know, that 29 years ago, the alcohol was making its way down towards the children, that's why I came. And here we are today, talking about something that supposedly will stay among the adults. I don't trust that that will happen, personally. I'm concerned about what may happen with this. I've looked at statistics in other cities, it took me three pages on the internet before I finally found someone that had some information that was more legitimate. Everyone was looking for these statistics, bending them the way they wanted to, to say this is okay. But that's not true. And so I work with a lot of kids, whether it's through football, ministry, what have you. I work with a lot of young people, and I've never seen any child, any young person benefit, whether scholastically, athletically, socially, because of marijuana use. And so I just want to ask you to consider, think of, of this, think of the impact that it'll make for our children and for our community. Thank you.
Hi, Santa Dominguez, 346 Catalina Street, I'm gonna be less than 30 seconds. I just want to say that I'm very aware and familiar with medical marijuana. And for people with chronic illness and that are dying, marijuana is a wonderful thing. But it is apples and oranges of what we're talking about today, and I just, I'm honored to stand here before you all, and I appreciate your, your commitment to our community to be on the city council and as our mayor. You are gonna set a legacy, and it will always be remembered, how this decision was made, and I just challenge you, you can always, please say no. If you wanna do your research, and you don't wanna study, and you can change later, but if, to say now, yes now, you're opening up a can of worms that you will never be able to put back in.
Rhonda Kalish, 100 Banning Drive, um, I just wanted to, once again, um, show up. The thing that I continue to think about with this decision that we are at hand with is that, um, it seems to me that there's always a reason why there has, we have to be in the group of what's happening. We're a different community, we have opportunities here to open our eyes and be involved with each other, and to really live with each other. Our, our next doors are in our bedrooms just about of some of our neighbors, you know? I personally know from what I do here with Choices, is that every young person that I have worked with, except for one, in the years that I've been doing this, have all started with marijuana. And you would think that it would be alcohol, but surprisingly enough, marijuana is actually easier to get here than alcohol. So as I look at our community, I look at the school, and I hear, I see 630 kids, that's just K through 12. We have kids, kid, kids at play, kids ventures, and all of the other young kids in our community that haven't even joined, you know, in to receive education yet. And for these young people, it's not like, you know, when you or me or anybody else was doing Cheech and Chong and, um, smoking marijuana. Uh, the THC level, which is the part of marijuana that gets you high, is 78% higher now. The kids, from what they have told me, because I'm very well-informed about this, they tell me that one piece, otherwise known as a nug, the size, maybe smaller than your finger, baby fingernail, can get five young people high, and that's for $20. And there isn't any problem of kids finding that today. With this proposition that's before us today, it scares me of what will potentially happen. Of course, we're not talking about kids doing it, but in reality, I guarantee you, our kids will be doing more of it. In different parties, different, uh, you know, festivities that we have, alcohol is just taken advantage of. Who will be regulating the people that are growing this? And I do want to say this right now, is that I am, Choices, myself personally, I am sensitive to those who need medical marijuana. My dad went through that when he was dying of cancer, I understand that. But this is not what we're talking about, as all of the other people have shared here today. The adolescent brain that young people, until 25 years of age, it is still developing. The synaptic pruning of your, their brains is what's happening. There's different things that literally is causing their brain to change. And so at this age, it's so important for us to really think about our responsibilities for our young people in this community. So I just would ask you, you know, banning seems, oh, that seems terrible, but yet can we not take the look at, how can we really look at the, this as responsible community members that will join together in unity and bring solution for this community? I hope you consider that, thank you so much.
Thank you, Rhonda.
Yolanda Montana, 20 Kenyon Terrace, I just have a question for you, Scott. So, um, as you all know, I, I, 20 years ago, I needed medical marijuana. Um, I was deathly ill, and I did almost die, and, um, it did make me, um, comfortable during that time, and it was a street drug at that time, not medical marijuana. So, um, with that being said, I'm, I don't smoke weed or marijuana today. But, um, so if you do ban this item tonight, then that means they, they took action, so it can come back to the table at a later date, you said?
If the council were to enact a ban tonight, we'd have to do a second reading at the next agenda, but it could be that, uh, because you, again, have, you've started to regulate it, you actually have a regulation that you could in the future allow it, up to the state requirement of, uh, six mature and 12 immature.
Okay, I just, you know, I'm here because, um, I feel like we do have sick people on the island quite often, and that they can benefit from this. I do know, um, that we do have a drug problem on the island, we've had one since I was in high school, we've had one since Richard was in high school. Um, I, I think we need to also focus on the lack of parenting and, and get parents educated as well to help fight this drug problem, but I don't want to completely take out another source of somebody who is terminally ill having the right to, if they need to grow marijuana, because they're so sick that they can't go to the mainland and, and so forth, you know? I, I was addicted to codeine and Xanax for a year after I was well, after taking it for two years straight, you know, every day. So, um, those are highly addictive drugs, um, that are being sold on the street today that are legal. And, um, but after I got, you know, was healthy and in remission, um, I never smoked pot after that. I still don't. But it took a lot to get off of Xanax and codeine, over a year. So please keep that in mind, thank you.
Any other big buddy wanna come up and speak? Council?
Well, I will go ahead and start. Um, the recommended action, as it's listed, is that the city council adopt an ordinance amending the municipal code to limit cultivation of medical marijuana in the city. So, um, I will make the motion that we limit cultivation to no cultivation.
Okay, we have to amend the ordinance, and I can tell you how to do that.
Oh, I would like to amend the ordinance for that.
So what the motion would be, would be a motion to introduce, in a way of all readings, of an ordinance amending Title V, Chapter 20 of the Avalon Municipal Code to, rather than say to, to limit, we, we keep it at limit, cannabis cultivation in the city, and then the direction would be to, um, eliminate the, in Section 1 of the ordinance, the definition of qualified patient, and in Section 2 of the ordinance, subdivision B, which, uh, allows, creates an exception for the cultivation. Section A provides, cultivation of marijuana shall be considered a prohibited use in all zoning districts of the city. No use variance, building permit, or any other entitlement or permit, whether administrative or discretionary, shall be approved or issued for the establishment of any marijuana cultivation uses as defined herein in any zoning district. And no person shall otherwise establish such businesses or operation in any district. That is the law that would ban cultivation. The next section creates the exception that says that if you have your card, you can grow three mature, six immature, and half possession of eight. So the motion, if you wanted to ban it, would be to adopt the ordinance as, with the title, but eliminate those two sections.
That's my motion.
You eliminate, you eliminate the exception, you eliminate the exception that allows the three, six, and possession of eight ounces.
So we're eliminating A and B of Section 5 dash 2007?
You would be, you would be, no, you'd be eliminating the, uh, in Section 1, you'd eliminate- You would be, no, you'd be eliminating the, in Section One, you'd eliminate the definition of qualified patient, and in Section Two, you'd eliminate Five dash twenty point oh seven B, which is the exception which allows three mature and six immature.
So A would stay in.
A would stay in.
B is eliminated. Okay. Thank you.
I'll still second.
And I apologize, Mayor. I should've qualified that at the time of the motion, and now I'm a little confused, but I believe very strongly and very supportive of the legitimate person who has the legitimate need, who has the proper state card to be able to consume medical marijuana for that particular need, but I do not see that we need to cultivate in town. So that's the basis for my motion.
Thank you.
I just have a couple questions. Because there is legislation pending for the voters in November on marijuana, I've looked those up, and there's a, for recreational use.
Correct.
So, let's say it's banned today, and then this, the recreational use thing is passed in the state of California. We can still ban the whole recreational use issue, or?
I believe the proposed state law would preempt local ordinance, but I have to look at that.
I think it did too.
I really have to look, I don't, I'm not quite certain if that's actually qualified yet, because there are several ballot initiatives that are out there for, that would legalize marijuana in California. And so we have to look at all of them to see whether they're qualified, and in some other states, what those have done is they've said it's permitted throughout the state, local entities can't prohibit it. I just don't know if one of the several proposed state initiatives would allow you to ban it or not.
And another question, and something that you were kind of talking about last time, Cindy, that was brought up, is the state ID card. I mean, you have a motion on the table, but I guess one of my thoughts is, if I had a state ID card, and I'm not able to get over, I mean, I guess, you know, after talking to the captain and whatever in here, I mean, enforcement seems to be a big problem we have with the use of marijuana, and I don't know if we have to get tougher on crime and say, this is now a priority, you know, Sheriff's Department, so that you don't have the priests going out there and seeing people, you know, I mean, do we have to do lockdown now at Casino Point? And then, I mean, you know, I don't know, because the illegal marijuana will still, it's still going to be here, is the pathetic thing. It's not, it's not going to go away. So I don't know.
I hear that, and I agree with you wholeheartedly. It's going to be here, no matter what we do. I'm not willing to sit here as an elected official and contribute to the problem. So that's why I'm taking such a strong stance on it. I believe, with all due respect to the Sheriff's Department, I do believe we have an enforcement issue. There is, as we've heard many times, a very fine line between the letter of the law and the spirit of the law. And do I wanna see fifteen to twenty of our teenagers arrested every Friday or Saturday night? No, I don't. But I don't want to allow the drinking and the smoking and the other things that happen behind the casino or at Three Palms or at the gate, you know? So, in our position as a city leader, I'm taking a stance and saying, I don't wanna contribute to anything further. I would rather take a stand and work with some sort of potential permit for the, what is it, one person in our community that may have a legitimate card. And there's some discussion on whether or not the state-issue card is actually required for cultivation. There's some discussion about, you know, the process of getting a state card. I'm saying that there's a lot more to look at, and so I wanna take the stance and say no.
But, and you're just saying no on the cultivation issue?
Today, because that's all we're talking about today, is cultivation.
Right. But people can still have their, but people can still have their cards.
But somebody could still, if Scott Campbell had a card, and he had the medical need, and he was legal, and he brought over his nub, or whatever it's called, then he's legal and legitimate, and that, I'm not involved in that. I'm involved in creating an ordinance to say that cultivation is okay, or any other discussions down the road.
The sole issue, and the sole issue created by the state legislature was cultivation and cultivation only. That's all the state legislation dealt with. And the state legislature said, if you don't regulate, then it's legal to cultivate as of March first. So, and that's the only thing the legislation dealt with.
Okay.
Really fast, two of the things that you just talked about. Even if it makes it onto the November first ballot, there's still a really good chance, because we voted it out last time, that it will not be approved.
Twice before, yeah.
So we have to just kinda take this issue as this is like our town, and this is the first fight. The other thing was the little section I didn't get to read, about the choices for people that do live here, that have legitimate need, so that they didn't feel like they were totally cut off. After a little research today, one of the options available to California residents who possess the card or recommendation is a mail order service delivered to your door. The name of the website is greensdirectdelivery.com, and they looked reputable. They even had a Yelp page. If you'd prefer to pick it up when you're on the mainland at one of those many doctor's appointments you'd have because you're terminal, there are eight dispensaries within a five-to-ten-mile radius of the boat. There's also an app that you can put on your phone, where they will deliver to you wherever you are, so you could have them meet you at the boat with your supplies, if that makes you feel more comfortable. So there's options. We just don't have to have it here.
There's a motion, and there's a second. And, but let me ask you another question. Are we going to, like all these cities that say, oh, we're going to research it for the next two years? What does that mean, when they say, well, we're gonna research it for two years?
So, so, let me, I'm gonna get in the weeds for just a little bit.
Ooh!
Okay. Oh, I didn't even intend that. I spared. Oh, my gosh.
Sure.
No, I really didn't. I really, really, I really didn't. Okay. So what, so what, some cities are saying, we don't like it, and what they're doing is, via an urgency ordinance, they're amending their zoning code, which we're not doing, we're looking at the health and safety code. But if you amend your zoning code, you can put a moratorium for up to two years to study it. That's if you amend your zoning code. Your medical marijuana, or your marijuana regulations in Avalon are not in your zoning code, they're in your health and safety code.
Okay.
So, you basically, you don't have that requirement that you have to do something within, within two years. It's frankly easier to regulate it outside of the zoning code, because you don't have that two-year limit. So that's what some cities are doing, because their marijuana regulations are in the zoning code. Ours aren't.
Okay. I just saw additional law enforcement walked into the door. Did he have a comment? Danny? Okay. He's just visiting. Okay. I think we know what the amendment to the ordinance, it would be, and I think it's time to call for the vote.
Marshall, Sampson, Cassidy, Olson, one no. Councilmember Hernandez.
Wait a minute. I don't think I voted correctly on that. So I'm not voting for the ban. I'm voting for this item on the agenda, so.
Okay, so you would like to change your vote.
Yes, I absolutely would like to change my vote.
Let the record reflect. I think we can, we can, we can ask for a revote, if you just say you wanna make certain you're clear. So let's do just a revote, just to make certain. It's not a motion reconsider, it's just a, so that your record is clear. So a vote, a yes vote bans cultivation of marijuana.
And we can look at that at a later date, though.
You can always look at it at a later date.
Uh-huh. All right. Let's try again. One, two, three. Go.
Three ayes. Marshall, Cassidy, Olson, two noes. Sampson and Hernandez.
Okay. Now what are we gonna do?
We're gonna go to camp.
No, we're gonna what?
I don't know where we are. Kim?
Yeah.
One minute break. And?
We did ten.
Mayor?
Yes. Yes, you may, if you're that quick, sure.
One minute break.
Okay.
Hurry. Beating.
Wait, hold on, hold on. Where are we going next?
We're going to eleven. Yeah.
And we're gonna do the hospital board, Avalon Municipal Hospital Board of Trustees meeting.
Wait, he's not turned on yet.
He's not turned on yet. We're gonna do the hospital board quickly. It's about a two-minute meeting.
No, it's not.
Yeah, it is.
We're meeting the night.
I'd like to call to order the Avalon Municipal Hospital Board of Trustees meeting. Roll call, please.
Trustee Cassidy.
Here.
Trustee Hernandez.
Here.
Trustee Marshall.
Here.
Trustee Sampson.
Here.
Chairman Olson.
Here.
Do we have a presentation, Michael? What do you mean, no?
We have, we wanna come with a comments.
Oh, comments, okay. So we have the presentations, oral communications, the Board of Trustees, well, except comments from the public at this time. No action will be taken on non-agenda items at this meeting. Speakers should limit their comments to three minutes.
Since we're not on the agenda, not an official presentation, I wanted to take this time to introduce to the community the new CEO of the Medical Center, Jason Paray. He joins us from Portland, by way of Alaska, Hawaii, Virginia, and Glendale.
Wow.
I'd like to thank the council for letting me be here. I've been in healthcare for over twenty years. I'm very passionate about the patient experience, and I look forward very much so to adding more services and programs, so as that, as I've learned, individuals here in our community do not have to go over town in order to receive healthcare services. Thank you.
And I understand you're also, you have a family that will be joining you at some point?
I hope so. Now, they will be arriving next Sunday, hopefully.
Sweet, great. Well, welcome, welcome to Avalon. Enjoy our community.
We love it. And, you know, I know, I am an alumni to Camp Fox, so I do have another connection to the island. Thank you.
Excellent. Well, welcome, welcome, welcome.
That's the end of oral communication. Consent calendar, Ms. Reddy?
We have two consent calendar items this evening. The first one is actions from the December fifteenth, two thousand and fifteen Hospital Board of Trustees meeting. The second one is two reports of the CEO, and that's for September eighteenth and October twenty-second of two thousand and fifteen. And the second report is the CFO's financial statements for August and September of two thousand and fifteen.
Comments on the trustees?
No comments. I'd just like to make a recommendation to approve the December fifteenth Hospital Board actions, and receive and file the Chief Executive Officer's report.
Cool. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Comments from the public? Call for a question.
All ayes.
General business, we have none. Chair has no reports. Members' report?
None.
None.
We're adjourned.
Thank you very much. Okay. And back to item eleven.
Where, okay, wait, where are we? Eleven?
Item eleven is assessment of the Avalon transit procurement response and determination of the next steps, and Roy has been very patient for his items to come forward, as well as Zandra.
Good evening. We're just gonna go over real quick why we're here and get some direction on where to go forward. We started the process, I believe, in May to go out to bid for the operation of our transportation system, which is- transportation system, which is a fixed route, paratransit and dial-a-ride program. The proposals were due in November. We received one on time by the incumbent and one we received late, therefore we were unable to open it. The incumbent's proposal was an alternate proposal. It didn't address all of the needs that were called out that in the proposal itself that the city was looking for, and therefore it was rejected. Roy and myself did some outreach to people to find out perhaps why they didn't submit proposals. We took that information and we've developed it into a new RFP, should the council want to go that direction. Let's see. What else did I want to talk to you about? Oh, and in the staff report, I did discuss insurance because one of the feedback, one of the comments we received from the incumbent was that the requirement for the insurance was high. Since the city is proposing to maintain and operate the buses and the paratransit buses, I did do some research and found out that the city will need to carry maintenance insurance. Parsac does not cover that. I did do some analysis for you. There's some spreadsheets in the back. I do want to let you know that the placeholder for the insurance is a very, very high estimate. One of the things that we were trying to find out is if the city carried the insurance, maybe at a lower cost, would we then require less liability insurance from the operator? And CALTA, which is kind of like Parsac, it's a transportation risk pool, said that 10 million is the transit standard, so we are recommending that the $10 million in liability insurance that's called out in the RFP remain the same, based on their recommendations. We will be coming back to you with their insurance quotes for the maintenance insurance. So I've listed multiple options for the council to consider. One would be to accept the alternate, let's see, wait, say one. One would be to extend the existing contract with Catalina Transportation Services without changing the services. We called out the concerns with that. Two would be to accept the alternate proposal submitted by CTS. We had concerns with that as well. The third option would be cancel the present procurement, modify the RFP and solicit new proposals, which is what we're recommending, with changed language in the RFP and the city purchasing the paratransit vehicles, which also seemed to be, in the last RFP, if you recall, we gave the bidders two options, one to provide the vehicles and one for the city. The council has approved in the amended budget the purchase of the vehicles, so the next item on the agenda will be to purchase those vehicles to bring down the cost of the procurement. We have in here an option to operate the fixed route with city staff and contract the demand response services to Catalina Transportation. And then the final option is for the city to operate the entire system itself. If you have any questions, Roy is here and I am here, and I think that the incumbent would also like to speak.
I have some questions. If you want me to.
You can start.
Okay. My first question, which is probably going to be pretty easy, is when you go, when you look at option three, then option four, and then go to option five, there is the capital cost of the fare box slash vaults. It goes from three buses to five buses. Is that because of the, the, which one? The two new vehicles for the paratransport?
They would require the contractor doing the paratransit to provide the vaults.
Okay, so.
To provide the fare boxes.
Okay. I wanted to clarify that. And then if we were to look at option five, just so I can get my numbers a little more clear, there is, when you're looking at the 12.5 full-time employees, there's an option here for a manager. Is that something that could fall under community services, recreation and community services, or does that have to be a specific full-time?
I would say it would be specific full-time. It's, the transit industry is, you know, highly regulated and there's a lot of technical knowledge that would need to come at that position, but it's a good question.
It's, yeah, it was worth asking. And then the, the computer hardware and software for the allocation of $10,000, can you just help me understand what that?
Sure.
That would just be like on, a manager sitting at a desk having a computer and, or is there a particular?
The operation of the paratransit services requires scheduling and reservation software that you do not have today.
Got it.
And, and so I guess also, go ahead.
That's probably a low figure.
But it's also probably a one-time cost.
Okay.
Right. So this is pretty much the first-year analysis.
Okay. And then my last question on number, on option number five, I guess all of them in general. But if we were to look at option number five, do we have any idea how much the fare box would generate to the city to offset some of those?
The fare box are in the revenue figures already, so they do not net out of these numbers. You're already including fare box revenues in the, in the revenue figures we gave you several months ago.
Okay. Okay, I'm good for a minute.
If we ran this ourselves, let's start with five, would we be, where were we envisioning, where would we envision setting up shop?
How big's your house?
How big's your house? Roy said. So I think that, that a lot of the, the main stuff, the city's already planning on doing by maintaining the vehicles and storing the vehicles themselves.
Dispatcher.
A dispatcher, I mean, we, we're proposing in, in the, in the RFP to try and find some office space for the, if we go out for a procurement. There's been, there's some office space identified at the mall that we could use temporarily. We've talked about providing city hall space to do the dial-a-ride and the paratransit applications, maybe in the lobby. I mean, I think that we could, I think that that is something we could figure out. And, and just to be clear, I'm not promoting option five.
No, no, I know. It's just the one that gave me more questions.
Right. And I think that it was just, I felt like, and, and another, another thing too that had been asked quite a few times by Ole was, was what is this, what does the city cost? What is it going to cost to charge the vehicles and what is, you know, what is, my time probably isn't accurately portrayed, how much time I actually spend, so all of that's been adjusted to accurately portray what it's going to cost the city before we even do the procurement. And I think that's important, and you have that information now, which I don't think you had the full picture before.
If we could maybe, because Karen, I'm sure you've read this and Connie and you know these options. Is there anything that has been stated or any changes that you are thinking of as we look to different options?
Well.
What's that?
I have a statement that I'd like to read, if you don't mind. My name is Karen Hague and I'm here representing Catalina Transportation Services and to talk to the city council and the residents of Avalon about what I know about the transportation situation that you're in. Okay? I'm going to read it and I'll provide a copy with you at the end if you'd like. "Since May of 2001, when I accepted responsibility for running the city of Avalon's transportation programs, I have thought of myself as the transportation arm of the city." That's a phrase that Rob Clark gave to me when I first started working with him. He was the first city manager, I've been through many, that I've worked with and many city councils as well. "I am an expert in transportation in this city. I have been doing it for 15 years, and I need you to know that, okay? And I have always endeavored to provide the best possible transportation programs for our residents and our visitors. I have learned a tremendous amount in these last 15 years, and the company that I own and run has changed and has become very professional and very customer service oriented. Every year, either myself or my management staff or both attend two or three trade shows. They include state and international organizations for taxi and paratransit services and fixed route service organizations, including CalACT, which I made the city aware of about six or more years ago. Through CalACT, through your membership, I went to the first conference, I took Audra with me to the first conference in San Francisco. We had a great time. Through your now membership in CalACT, you've been able to purchase these vehicles. I, I would venture to guess at this point that our city has the best demand service, if not one of the best, in the world. Where else in the world can you pick up a phone and call and have somebody at your door within 10 minutes or less, depending, and provide the kind of service that we provide? This includes our regular cabs and our wheelchair accessible service as well. I am extremely proud of the people who have worked with me over the years to provide this professionalism and the customer service that we've made happen. As maybe, maybe you know, I'm not sure, I went back to teaching and I've been teaching over town. Connie Stewart has been managing my company and is doing an amazing job, and I have totally enjoyed my teaching time. I have to put that in there. I am, I teach high school science. I'm teaching this year chemistry and earth science, and it's so much fun. I just can't tell you how, what joy I get in helping kids learn how to learn and then learn to love learning, as I think we all should. But the fact that I've been over town doesn't mean that I have not been paying attention to the business, to my business here. I have been in regular communication with my team and back on the island very often. I know this transportation business. I've been doing it for 15 years. Avalon is a special place. Its transportation needs are not like the transportation needs over town. Visitors as well as residents need to be serviced in the best possible way with the funding that's available during the slow times as well as the peak season. The transportation plans put out by the MTA, the state and federal governments, are designed for much larger population centers. Avalon is a very small town and our needs are unique, so, to the reason I'm here tonight. Last fall, you put out a request for proposal to the public to obtain bids for running the new bus system and dial-a-ride as well as Avalon access. I need to tell you my perspective on this proposal, on this request.
Wait, let me just interrupt for a minute. Council, is it okay if she continues?
I think so.
Okay. I know, the three-minute warning bell went off, so that's why I'm saying that.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't hear, okay.
No, that's okay.
The request that you put out last fall is the same system that was described to me six months after the city manager who's now left, I sat down in a meeting with him, six months into his tenure of being our city manager. You may recall that he came and it was a big mess. The city was a big mess, needed a lot of stuff to deal with, a lot of debt and so on. So I waited, and I knew that, so we waited and we met. He described the system, and when I read your request for proposal and I saw that it was the same, I was, I was kind of, well, let me finish reading what I said, okay? "I remember the discussion distinctly when he described this transportation program that he had envisioned. We were told not to show how something couldn't be done, but to show how it could be done. So we tried. We collected data. We provided ideas. We were available for any kind of questions or anything, but none of our ideas were listened to or even considered. None." And I have to say this again, the transportation system that you requested is basically the same system that was envisioned by a brand-new city manager six months into his tenure here in the office. That just really bothers me. How can someone come in and at a first meeting know already what the transportation needs of the city of Avalon is, are? How can you know that? Okay, so I dive on a little here to say that when I teach science and I give a problem to my students to solve, the first thing they have to do is collect information before they can solve a problem. In marketing, in most business fields, the first time you want, before you implement a program, before you implement a program, you first test it out and see if it works. A really important thing that you did not consider also as you were deciding on this particular program and design of a transportation system was that you neglected to check with your constituents. They're your constituents, the citizens of Avalon. You don't know what their travel, what their travel plans are or, or any of the patterns here in the city. You haven't checked with anybody. And I think that's really important. We've been getting a lot of questions at our office about this program and what's, from our customers, what's going to happen? Checking with them seems to me it would have been the first logical step. And as I bring forth this point, I have to include another part of this discussion, and that's about the art program, which has been ignored basically as you address these other two programs. And the question that is asked most often of us in our office is, will there be enough funding to continue the art program? And I don't have an answer to that, and I would love for you to provide an answer to the citizens and also to me, because it appears on the surface that if any funding is available for the art program, it's left over if the other, once the other programs are funded. And there are a lot of residents here in this island that depend on the art program, and they need to be considered. Keeping in mind also that this fixed route service that you have provided and that you want running from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. doesn't hit the sides of the hills. It only services the valley, the floor of our canyon. Okay, so there's a few things in the staff report that I'd like to address. You stated, "We only provided limited information on how, on how the services would be managed, administered and operated. To that point, our training outline was more than adequate with the certifications, services and the training for all management, for management and all employees. These meet ADA, CHP, California law and your RFP requirements," so I take issue with that. Another point in your staff report states that CTS, CTS's proposal failed to describe how CTS would become adequately versed in the operation of ADA paratransit services to ensure that the city is fully compliant with law. Well, we've studied the ADA requirements. As far as I can tell, there are three relatively easy fixes for what you have identified as inadequacies, and we are addressing them, and we address them in our proposal. Number one, we are taking reservations now. In the past, there's not been a need to take reservations, and to be honest, nobody's asked for reservation. This is, I believe, because of the nature of our business, all you got to do is call us and we'll be there, like Ghostbusters. Companions can ride for free with certain limitations with the access and the dial-a-ride, and our reservations, our reservationists are being trained on a communication system for the disabled. So we've been doing this program for almost 15 years, and this is the first time you've ever indicated that we were inadequate? And why hasn't it come up before? And what are we not, what inadequate, what inadequacies have we not addressed? Another item on the staff report I'd like to discuss is the statement that we are not willing to operate your new vehicles. That's not the case. We could not have run the fixed route service the way you put forth in your RFP and be cost-effective. We couldn't do it, simply couldn't do it. And if we put forth an RFP, if we put forth a proposal saying that we were going to do it, we would be bound by a contract law. So we couldn't. It wouldn't work. It's not financially feasible, and the number of specially licensed drivers needed to run that schedule proposed is not feasible in a small town like this. It's just not. And I believe that the anticipated ridership, although I'm not aware of what your ridership anticipations are, I wish I'd have seen those numbers, but I can't imagine that they're going to meet what you anticipate, a fixed route service around the town. Lastly, about the staff report, I don't know about the legalities that are mentioned often in your staff report about how utilizing our services would eliminate some of the transportation funding, but I do know one thing, and that is postponing is not the same as awarding. Postpone your decision tonight and reconsider the format of the city's transportation service. Sit down with us, sit down with your citizens and learn about the travel patterns of your citizens and design a transportation system that will work for this town. We are not like over town. We're small. We're very small. We're exceptional. We don't fit the pattern of transportation that they have over there. Okay, so I'm here tonight because I feel a great sense of responsibility to the citizens of Avalon. I've been taking care of their transportation needs for 15 years, and I've taken great pride in the way we've done it. And, and by the way, my company's going to be fine, whether we get this contract or any contract with you or not. My company is going to be fine, so this is not a self-serving, you guys are kind of a pain to work with, so, you know, my company's going to be fine. But I offer this, I felt the need to share my thoughts about the transportation services you're proposing. I do not believe, based on my years of experience in running these programs for you, that you are headed in the right direction with your proposal. So again, I'm here tonight to offer me and my company's assistance if you're interested. We are willing to work with the city to run these programs through a postponement of your RFP. your RFP as well as other decisions with regards to these programs until June of 2017. We would do trial runs, we would collect data, we would design a system that works with everyone. We would talk to your citizens. We would have focus groups, whatever is needed, to find out what is the best kind of transportation system. So, I just want to thank you for the 15 years that I've done this, and if I no longer work with the city, that's okay. But I think the direction you're going in is, is not the correct one. And I'm going to give you a copy of the letter now, and there is an attachment at the end of that letter with some more pertinent information.
Thank you, Karen.
Certainly.
I'd just like to rebut a couple of things. First of all, the city manager may have talked to Catalina Transportation about what he envisioned the system would be, but it was the city council who made the decision and directed the RFP. Every single one of you sat down with Roy, had multiple conversations about what you wanted to see and what your vision for transportation was. And I'd also like to add that we're not going to be taking away a dial-a-ride service at all. That is not what is... Dial-a-ride and paratransit is not going to be touched, so you're still going to have dial-a-ride service. Yeah, you do. Yeah, you do. Okay, I'm not going to, okay. Okay, regardless, so I would, I would like to be really clear that it wasn't the city manager who was dictating this process, that the council was intimately involved in, in what the RFP looked like when it went out. Secondly, the cover letter to your proposal clearly stated that you would not operate the buses. That's what the cover letter said. It said they're unsafe and that your drivers, the drivers you have needed special endorsements that they don't have now. Okay, in the, well, in the RFP, the specifications for the e-buses were included, so it leads me to believe that maybe it wasn't read all the way through to come up with that, just an observation. So, those are the kind of things that I think that we need to make sure we get out. I am not doubting and I'm not discounting Karen's expertise and her, her value to the program, but I think that if you are a transit operator, you need to know what the ADA requirements are. That's your job. So, that's, those are my two cents. And, and, and I, I love Karen, I'm not beating Karen up, that's just... Yeah.
Just one more thing I have to say, and you know, Audra will have, frankly, I talked with the city manager six months into his tenure. It was our first conversation and your request for proposal matches the conversation that we had. And so I don't know how it is that you came to decide this, but you know, I can envision a path in my head, but I just had to say that.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is George Taylor. I live on Whitley. And I use these dial-a-rides like you would not believe. This is pretty much my main transportation on this island. I have a problem walking. I've just had a neck surgery and my problems are increased. I go through sometimes one and two books a day. So, the para is going to come to my house, pick me up, take me to the bus stop, drop me at the bus, so the bus will take me out to Pebley Beach. So the bus will go to Pebley Beach. My off, my shop is on Pebley Beach Road. I'm out by the, behind the beverage company, I have a shop there. I go there every day just to tinker. Gives me something to do. I'm retired. Sometimes I go, like I said, I go through two and three books a day. They'll testify. I'd probably buy more of these than anybody on the island. And if you get rid of this thing and change it from what it is now, I don't know how I'm going to get to work. My wife uses them to go back and forth to work. If I have to call someone to come pick me up at the house to take me to a bus, will I have to leave two hours early to go to work? That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Could I just interject because this is a concern that I've heard from just a small number in the community that, whether or not it is true, that they're being told that program is going away? That's what, I, I mean, so I guess I'm curious, George, I appreciate your comments, but where does the concern come from that the program's going to go away? Because it's not.
Okay, it's going to be changed though, right? You're going to change it? You're not going, I, well, I mean, I was, I called the taxi car, I called them, they come to my house, pick me up, and if I wanted to stop on my way to the, to my shop, I could stop at Barnes, run inside, grab something, come back out and take the same taxi, hop to my shop and just, and live that route. I don't have to, they're there every time I call them and I get to them. Sometimes 50 minutes in terms of someone to do something, but they're always there. I don't have the plan.
Oh, okay, so Audra, can you, can you help the community understand?
So there's two, there's two separate things. There's the dial-a-ride program, which will take this gentleman out to Pebley. It'll, it'll do exactly, probably won't stop at the grocery store because we're going to try and share rides to be more efficient, but certainly if he calls, if he calls, he will get a ride from his house to Pebley, dial-a-ride. Paratran... Huh? Do you share rides now? Okay. Paratransit is the on-call service, it's a complimentary paratransit to the fixed route. That's the key there. Dial-a-ride is going to stay the same, I mean, the dial-a-ride program, they'll still call, they won't have to buy tickets anymore, they'll just pay two bucks.
Okay.
Or whatever the determined fare is, there won't be tickets any longer, it'll just be...
It'll just be what it is?
Yep.
Okay.
Pinky? My name is Rose Taylor, I live at 310 Whitley, see? And I just want everybody to know that I am missing Star Wars for this. That's how important it is. I don't see what the need is, if we're going to still have the dial-a-ride and you want to do a fixed transit thing, what's the para thing for? I mean, they're going to pick you up at your house and take you to a bus stop so the bus stop can take you as far as the bus can go, so you can get another para thing to take you the rest of the way? And, and can we travel with our, like, George goes everywhere with the dog. How, how is that going to work? Are you going to start limiting whether or not my dog, am I going to have to start lying that my dog's a service dog? And what if I have like, we have to stop and pick up supplies? I can't stop and pick up supplies because I live up on top of a mountain, we can't stop at Chet's and pick up supplies on our way out to the shop? I mean, this, this seems like you're causing more problems than the ones you already have. That if, if dial-a-ride isn't going to go away, then what do you need this other stuff for? You got the city trolley that has a regular, regular run, if you're going to fix that, fix that, but leave the rest of it alone. It's, that just, that para thing seems like a waste of money. And, I don't know, so I'll just let you know that we like the things the way they are.
There's a lot to respond to, but I don't think we can do all of it tonight. But, one thing, we cannot leave the service the way it operates today. The city has been non-compliant with federal ADA law for 25 years and you cannot continue not providing ADA complimentary paratransit. You can't run a fixed route service without having the complimentary paratransit. You must change that element of the program. Now, basically, the, with the exception of the complimentary paratransit, the design is exactly the same as what you're operating today. Some change in some of the policies of how the fixed route would operate, but fundamentally, it's the same services you have today with that introduction of complimentary paratransit. So, we're not throwing things out. And the art service, in fact, there was a limit on tickets put in there, simply because the city doesn't have the money to provide as many trips as appear to be needed. So there's a finite resource here. You've got a limited amount of transit funds. How do you use those funds in the most appropriate way? And that's where we came for your guidance six months ago to the individual council and said, okay, how do you want to use these monies? Where do your priorities lie? What do you want to do with the funds you have? How do we do this best for the cities, the citizens of Avalon? So, we've been asking that question now for months. And, so I guess we go back to that. I don't think, I don't want to get into debates on, on details of who knows what and who's the expert in Avalon. There is no question Avalon is unique, every city is unique. You can't take a service out of one city and just dump it into another, and we haven't done that. So we've really tried to be sensitive to the needs here. It's difficult, no question. But I'd be happy to respond to questions, but I'd rather not get into some of the details, all the other things we could argue with, but I don't want to do that.
Hey Roy, let me ask you, will, will Mr. Taylor be able to get a taxi for the same price with the new, with the modified system that we're talking about, as many times as he needs to, for the same price range?
Well, the only place you've got a taxi operating, unless Catalina Transportation wishes to bid on the paratransit and operate it with some alternative, would be the art program. The art program has always been posited that it would stay with Catalina Transportation. They're the only taxi operator here in Avalon, so they would continue operating. They would continue doing the same kind of art trips, but in the policy recommendation and the way that it is stated so far, and this isn't, we've not addressed art as part of this procurement because it doesn't have, it's not a part of it. It is another program operated by the city that actually isn't under the contract assistance that I'm providing you, as far as the art program goes. But it does, in the package we gave you, the policy had a limit of one ticket book per user per, per month? Per month, and that was simply because there was not the money, and we were trying to figure out a way to ration the number of tickets and the costs across the population here in Avalon.
So that's different than, than what, what Mr. Taylor presently uses, correct? I mean, that's, will he continue to, to be able to take as many trips as he needs? Someone, someone like Mr. Taylor, that is, because there's other people in this community that have needs like him. I mean, probably not a lot, but I'm sure there's some that don't have transportation and they need to use the community bus system or transportation system.
I'm sure there are a lot of folks like that. Under the present operation, you have, there are two names going on here, art and dial-a-ride. The difference between the two is in the price of the ticket and who can use them. Art is available to all full-time residents of Avalon, unlimited number of ticket books at $2 per ticket. I got the numbers right? $2 per ticket? Okay. The dial-a-ride is for seniors and disabled individuals at $1.50 per ticket. Again, no limit to the number of tickets. So the difference is the eligibility and the price for their ticket. Once they own the ticket, they're treated exactly the same in the way the service is provided. They call and they get a taxi ride anywhere within the city, with the exception to Hamilton Cove? Same one ticket to Hamilton Cove? Two tickets to Hamilton Cove?
And to Pebley.
And to Pebley.
That's how we run so many books.
Okay, but that's where the difference, that's where the new program has to differ because of the paratransit program that we've got to put in with ADA complimentary paratransit. It does not operate the same, it cannot operate the same under ADA laws. So the art program is held, we're trying to hold that exactly the same, the same eligibility, the same, you know, use of tickets, but the dial-a-rides have to change. If I answered your question, I think I went way further.
So the dial-a-ride's changing, still $1.50 per ticket or we're not going to have, or is it going to be a free ride?
There would not, there would not be tickets.
There won't be tickets, it'll be a $2?
It'd be a $2 fare.
Okay.
As many as they need to take in a day.
As many as they can, they need to take in?
Space, space...
Space available, yes.
Space, space available. Because we've only got...
But they're only going to be running dial-a-ride, they're not going to be doing taxis.
Thank you, that's fine.
Good, Roy, there's the young lady behind you.
I just don't even know where to begin. My name is Pat Chrysler, I live at 114 Hill Street. I use dial-a-ride. I also have a handicapped son and I know all about ADA, and this is not being represented correctly. Now, first of all, I resent it that the gentleman here says that he doesn't have the time to explain all this in detail. You are here tonight to make a decision. How do you make a decision when you don't have any of the details? Now, let's review some of this. First of all, what they're saying is not what I have on my sheet here. They're saying that the trolley is, oh, there's three items, there are three separate items, so I should be allowed three minutes for each one because they need to be covered separately. And they just admitted there are three totally separate programs. I want to address all three. First, you're replacing the trolleys, I understand, with city buses. Is this what we call the paratransit system? Oh, so we have a fourth table here? Yes, you do. You have on here city buses, trolleys, art program, and DAR program, and now you're telling me there's a paratransit in addition? Well then, would you explain to me, all, all of us? Where does the paratransit fit into this? Which, which, which are the new age, which are the paratransits people riding on? The city bus, art, or, or are they just giving regular taxis?
Paratransit is a general term, the dial-a-ride program is a paratransit program, but so is art. Art is a general, is a paratransit program under the general term.
Why do we need a paratransit program if we already have taxis doing this?
It's, it's just an umbrella term, correct? That, that takes all of those things under, so, so that might be confusing you a bit.
I think it's confusing a lot of people a bit.
Well, then, if we could try not to use that paratransit term for now.
But I'm just trying to tell you that, you know, the public has not been informed on this. The public was never asked their opinions on this. We are the people, we, the people here, are the people using these services. Why were we never asked through a survey or anything what we thought of the services and what we thought might need changing, might not need changing? Why did this never happen? You're taking something that is working well and you're treating it like it needs fixing. It doesn't need fixing. You have a beautiful system here. I have used with my son the systems on the mainland. They are horrible. I can't begin to tell you how horrible they are. They make you make appointments way in advance, they don't show up or they don't show up on time. They charge you all kinds of things, they make you wear special pictures, what you have to go in and do, you have to fill out special paperwork, you have to do all kinds of things, wastes money and does nothing. And then when you go to make an appointment, they tell you they can't even go there. Now, why are we looking at these services for over here? We don't want something like this over here. We have an absolutely gorgeous system with the taxis, and we have a very unique situation that exists no place else, and that is getting to the boat on time. Now, I don't want a service, it says here on the paper, that under the new DAR program, we have to call an hour in advance and wait around and we will only get on whatever the transit is if there is room when it gets to us? You've got to be kidding. I live on Hill Street. No transit can go down Hill Street. Right now, I call the taxi service and I say, I want to go to the boat. The taxi service says, we will be there in five minutes, 10 minutes. They tell me how long they will be before they get there. I know how long it takes me to get my bags, my son, and my husband, and myself, all the way down Hill Street, to be there on time. Now what you're saying you want me to do is call them an hour in advance, go down to the end of Hill Street, sit there for who knows how long, except I can't sit. That's a problem. I have to stand. I'm elderly. I'm elderly. Maybe I can stand, but there's other elderly people can't stand for half an hour. Now, on the mainland, you know how they solve that problem? They put in stone benches. So wherever there's a pickup point that isn't at your home, they install stone benches. Are you going to go all around town installing stone benches? They are very expensive. But they are what has to be had if you don't know when they're going to come for you. Think about it. And we have lots and lots of streets, apartment complexes, condominiums, where the paratransit or any other transit can't get in there. So all the people are having to come out to a point to be picked up. Now, all those points will need stone benches. Because you're not letting us have a service like taxis that tell us when they're going to be there. This is terrible. Okay, so, the city bus. I don't understand why the trolleys are being replaced. That's number one. Because we got them originally for the tourists. Tourists love to ride them. They're something different. The tourists are not going to ride to ride buses. They can ride buses anyplace in the world. They don't want to come to here to ride buses, okay?
We can respond to that in a second. What is your next point?
Okay, so I don't understand this at all. And if you're going to have green buses, you need to put a sign up. Please try the green bus. It's electric. This is something new. Do something. I'm not going to ride the buses. Two, I think the art program, I think it's very, very unfair to say that I don't have funds to finance this anymore. You're looking into funds tonight, I hear, to finance housing. You're looking into funds to finance other things. This is important to residents here. You say you don't want a lot of cars. You don't want a lot of golf carts. You don't want all this traffic. And yet you're going to put on these poor people that live in positions where they can't walk to town to have to do something else. Why?
I just don't know where you're getting the opinion that we're taking away service. So I'm having a...
You're saying you can't provide vouchers on the morning of the week? That's what you just said?
No, 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 no.
No, that is not true.
No.
That's what I heard you say. What did you say?
Can we hear the rest of her points?
Yeah, if you can just make some very brief points for the, if we can...
Hey, that's what they said, that there's not going to be funds for the art program.
No, well, we've been saying no, that is incorrect. So wherever that information is coming from.
My concern is the DAR program, okay? I think it's very unfair to select out senior citizens and the handicapped and tell them they can't have the services the other people in town are having. The other people in town, tourists, everybody gets to call a taxi and have it come when they say they're going to come. Not be told that they can only go if the space is available. The taxi, I have never missed a boat because the taxi said we don't have any space available. I've always shared the taxis with other people. That's no big deal, okay? You're unique. There's no place else in California where you have to make boats. The boats don't wait. They won't, it's not going to work. There's no way it can work.
Well, if you, if you have another point, they're jotting that down and maybe there's something they can speak, they will come up and speak to those eight points, so...
Okay, I'm going to look through here to see if there's something else.
Well, while you're looking...
No, I've got it right here.
Oh, okay, there's someone behind you.
Oh.
Yes, I have a statement.
Okay, fine.
And I'm a senior. Melinda Sessions, one in Organic Drive. You know, I've been rich, I've been poor, I've traveled. And I gave up my car in Long Beach seven years ago. And one of the best experiences I've had is public transportation. No, every bus stop, when you get off the boat and you walk over the passport used to be free, I'm now a senior. For 75 cents, I went to Belmont Shore, Second Street, changed to Orange County Transit, went to Valboa Island, 35th Street for a reunion with my high school friends of 28. It cost me $1.75, took me two hours. Part of that problem was I had fun in that 30-minute wait because I went to Trader Joe's at the shopping center my husband built. I take public transportation all the time. This is my tap card through Metro. It's a temporary card. I go anywhere on Metro for two hours on a one-way trip from Long Beach to Diamond Bar for $1.75. On the express, I will get my picture ID. This is my book from Orange County Transit. I have my schedule for Long Beach Transit. It's all in the computer. I have had the best times of my life in public transportation. What is lacking in Avalon, and that's why I came down here tonight, is the fact that when I call the taxicab service in Long Beach, I have a private taxi. They're there in 10 to 15 minutes. They give me a response back on my phone of the taxi coming. In Avalon, I have Dial-A-Ride. I have to pay a tip. I've had my tips, if I give them in change, thrown on the floor. I have to share that. It takes longer to go from the boat to Yucatan Gardens Apartments than it does for me to call a taxi in Long Beach, travel on the Long Beach boat, Orange County boat, foothill transit to go 45 miles. We need diversification. There are funds available. I am a senior citizen. When I go on to Long Beach, Orange County, I just put my money in. I was carded once. It was a compliment. But he didn't believe I was 62. I said, thank you. No tip, no response. When I was handicapped and had a cane for six weeks, the bus was lowered. When I called a taxi, the taxi that came, they opened the door for me because they saw that I was handicapped and had a cane. I was given more respect in any place in the entire part of Los Angeles, Orange County, than I have been in Avalon. I don't want to share a taxi. I don't want to have to call for special things. I don't want to have to give a tip. I have Dial-A-Ride. I've had taxi coupons. I've been told I have to pay for boxes when I'm chaperoning kids that are going over town for cheerleading football teams for 40 years and been charged because I had extra luggage. And I paid it. What we need is diversification. Our taxicab service has taken over the tour industry. I don't have to pay twice the amount that I would pay in L.A., Orange County, or any place else and be disrespected. And that's my statement. And I have my proof. This is my temporary card for Metro. I can go from here to my house in Diamond Bar for $1.75, one-way trip, get on and off as many times as I want, as long as I get on and off their transportation system within a two-hour period, even though it might take three hours. I don't tip. I'm respected. I can take Orange County Transit, and these are government funds. And that's my statement.
Thank you, Melinda. Other comments? Is that, is that someone coming?
She never mentioned Dial-A-Ride once on the mainland. And I've had a lot of experience with Dial-A-Ride. That's what I was discussing. I wasn't discussing the others. Those are big systems to go long distances, and we are not a big system or a long-distance place.
I, thank you, Melinda. If you can make it really briefly, we've got one more, and then I think we're going to have to move on.
I took care of my grandmother and my mother in Long Beach and in West Covina with Dial-A-Ride. My grandmother died at 100, my mom at 95. With Dial-A-Ride, and they liked Dial-A-Ride, and we called and had no problem. And no tip, and was respected and helped.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. And Mr. Crowe?
Murray, you're next.
Murray's next.
Murray Crowe, 220 Catalina. My mother can't come up here. She doesn't walk. She has two caregivers. She's very happy with the service. She's very happy with the service that's provided here on the island through the city as well as this taxi company. Each time they call, they're there and they meet her needs and I don't know how much you can do to make it better, but she's happy.
That's beautiful. Thank you very much, Murray.
I've never had a problem calling for a taxi here, never once. And to tip is, what, respectful? Maybe you got good service, maybe you didn't get good service, but I always tip the drivers. Doesn't hurt to give them a dollar. My wife was in the hospital over town in Torrance. I had to go to Torrance. I had to go to about five different buses to go from L.A., or not from L.A., from Long Beach, the landing, to get to Torrance. And it took almost five hours to get there. Sure doesn't take me five hours to get anywhere.
No, that's right. And the town is one square mile. So, is there, Roy, just really quickly, is there anything, is anything you feel we should respond to before we take this under consideration? I mean, I think the highlights are, we're really not changing. We're definitely upgrading. You know, the electronic buses will be a plus. And, but I don't know, what else you want to just tap on briefly and so we can then begin our discussion?
I don't know where we can go with the summary here of all the comments you've heard. You certainly had a lot of opinions and a lot of controversy and a lot of questions asked. You fundamentally aren't changing the service. You're going to have a fixed route, which is equivalent to the trolley that you have today. It's a different vehicles, admittedly. That's been a decision made and they're well along the production line. The Dial-A-Ride services have to change because we need to come into compliance with ADA or we can't run fixed route. It's a fundamental decision. The art program, the intent is to keep it. Now, if the city wants to have unlimited tickets on art, then that's a budgetary decision and that's a policy matter. So that program has not been proposed to change as far as the art program goes. But Dial-A-Ride, yes, Dial-A-Ride changes. It's only going to have two vehicles, which constraints the demand, the number of trips can be provided. But then again, that comes down to budget. And I think there's very little we can do about, that I can do about that. It's really in your hands, I believe.
Okay. Thank you very much.
I think there's only going to be two vehicles and a lot of people need to go on boats at a given time. What you're saying is some of the senior citizens or handicapped people just won't get to go on the boat that day. That is very discriminatory. I think you should be looking into this. You know, the art program is set up, a lot of the parameters are discrimination parameters. And it sounds like over here with our unique needs, you're setting up some more discrimination problems instead of solving them. To take the seniors and the handicapped out of a program that's working and put them into a program that can't work based on two vehicles is discriminatory. I think you really should rethink this whole thing. And I don't think you should be voting on this tonight.
Just to clarify the last point, the seniors and disabled don't get out of art. They're the same people that are in today. It's any resident, permanent resident of Avalon is a participant in art or can be. There's no change.
That's, yes, I hear you, Roy. Thank you very much. Okay.
Again, the requested, the requested action, requested action tonight is to go out to RFP and get more proposals to come back at a later date to evaluate transportation services.
That's one of the options.
Right. Well, that's the recommendation.
That's the recommendation.
So, okay, let's say we do this again and we basically, though, would continue with what we're, because we were looking at an April 1 date, okay? The buses are going to be ready around April 1, correct? So we, let's say it happens that we, I don't know, this is why the time this thing goes out, I mean, we're talking two, two and a half months, whatever, close, getting close to April 1st, right? Pretty close. Okay.
Want to talk to you about the logistics of that or not?
So if we do go back out for RFP, in the staff report, I talk about coming back at the next council meeting to discuss the terms to extend Catalina Transportation's contract until we, until whatever happens, happens. Because we have to have a service that's running and operating. And I did mention that to Connie in a conversation. She said she was a little bit worried because she had told her driver that her driver, the trolley driver's job was ending based on the RFP. So we'll have to have some conversation, but we will definitely bring it back and have something in place, hopefully with CTS, to continue the service until the RFP process works its way through. The plan is to have the, whatever we get back to you by April 5th.
Okay, so then the question, okay, and then all of a sudden, bam. Is there a way, I'm just throwing it out there, that the buses are here and we're kind of on a month-to-month or a minute-to-minute or whatever?
You won't extend the contract while we go through the RFP process? You'll just... Okay, yeah, that's, that's why it needs to be separate.
So what, so I guess my thing was, and so depending on how that worked out, would they, when we get rid of the old buses, be willing to have your drivers drive the new ones? Because I don't believe they need any additional training, correct? They don't need additional training?
Training, but not any additional commercial...
Commercial, okay. Okay, they need to, okay, okay. And when we go out for RFP, how far-reaching can we possibly get even? How far-reaching can the RFP process go?
I'm not sure I understand.
Well, okay, when we put it out to RFP last time, we got two proposals, okay? Okay. And then what do we do diff, what could be done different to try to entice more or get additional input? Or we'd be looking at the same one or two?
No, well, we hope not.
Well, yes.
We've made changes to the RFP, to some of the requirements, based on the surveying, the discussions had with some of the firms that had shown up for the pre-bid and that were on the mailing list but did not respond. Asked them why they did not bid and, you know, were there any things that could be changed specifically to encourage, to make the project, you know, more reasonable for any company, including a number of the companies we talked to are island firms. Based on those discussions, we did change some of the requirements in the RFP package to increase the likelihood of securing some reasonable bids. One of the changes is the next-gen item, and that's buying the two Dial-A-Ride vehicles. Because they did say that buying those vehicles in the time we're talking about was going to be a problem. So we believe, I think your question is how, what are we doing to get more responsive bids?
Exactly, yeah. And you just responded.
We hope we've just done that.
Right, okay. I hear you. Okay, great. Thank you.
If we go ahead and approve this, we can guarantee that the riders at Avalon will not have a lapse in coverage whatsoever and everything will continue as it is?
Do you have the proper license? We may be driving those buses ourselves. I can drive the van, you can drive the bus. You've already driven them. Sure.
Yeah, so we'll be all right.
I don't mean to be flip, but that, there are, yes.
Yeah, everything's going to stay the same if this is, if this is passed and this does go out. Okay, so we can, we can definitely guarantee that...
I mean, that's what I think they were just saying, maybe we definitely have to have a little child care, and I mean, if something comes...
I don't think you should speak for Karen.
No, exactly. No, exactly, yeah. We will do all in our power. So, okay, counsel? Once again. If, well, are you making a motion? Is that a motion?
Yeah, I think we need to go ahead and get our RFP going again. I'd like to see that it go and give them direction further to redo the RFP again.
Okay, there's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We moved to a second. Further comment?
Also, do we need to direct staff to continue negotiations with Catalina Transportation Services for an interim agreement?
Okay.
Yeah.
Do you accept that amendment to the motion?
Moved to a second. Call for the vote?
All ayes.
Okay, okay, here we go.
It's me again. Do you want me to just go ahead, or? Please, okay. So, this is the...
Agenda item number 12.
Request to purchase the paratransit vehicles. The quote is attached. We are a member of Cal Act, and that allows us to be part of this purchasing cooperative. And as we have discussed in the previous agenda item, we feel that purchase, providing the vehicles and the maintenance will assist us in having more competitive procurement process this next go-around. So, we're asking for your blessing to begin the procurement process to purchase the buses.
How many miles of the gallon these suckers get?
I don't know.
I mean, they're gas.
They're gas. They're not, they're not, no.
Yeah.
Are they in configuration to carry six passengers?
Right, or with the wheelchair, it's four.
With a wheelchair and three passengers?
Yeah. And previously, we had come to counsel and discussed a larger paratransit vehicle, but upon closer examination of that vehicle, we realized that it wouldn't meet the needs of the terraces and the smaller streets. So, we kind of have to keep the smaller vehicle to make sure that we service the pass, the riders in those areas that are tighter. So, we've had to reduce the capacity of riders to meet the smaller streets.
So, we're going down, well...
They're the same size as the taxis.
Okay, so, so right now...
It's a minivan, caravan.
Yeah, so if I, if the current vans, and there's a handicap, the wheelchair or whatever, that was the wheelchair in the back, or the wheelchair, I don't even know where the wheelchair goes on one of those things.
In the middle of the front.
And then, it'll be, it'll be...
So, that's kind of the same as this, so they, so when they have a wheelchair...
But both of them will be, right.
So, when they have a wheelchair in there, they lose the same amount of seats?
Yep.
Okay, so it's not like we would be reducing ridership possibility?
No, and the actual ADA ridership for actual wheelchairs is fairly low. It's not super high.
No.
And now, when you call the Catalina, you have to let them know that you need that vehicle. They don't keep that in service all the time, so.
Right, okay, okay.
That was one of my questions. Would these, would these two be used for regular transportation and just called out upon?
Well, so if you have your complimentary paratransit, then you would tell, they would know what your needs are, because you'd be in the database. And then, if you were just a regular Dial-A-Ride rider that had a wheelchair, you would, you would let them know, but, yeah.
Okay. So, yeah, my only worry was that they would just be sitting when there wasn't a need.
No, they're going to be, they're going to be the Dial-A-Ride vehicles also.
Right.
So, they'll be, they'll get, yeah.
These is Dan's.
And, and then I guess, when we were talking a few minutes ago about the decision we made on Agenda Item 11 may affect Agenda Item 12, that was whether or not we were going to continue with...
Right, so it was what your decision...
The current service or whether we were going to, okay.
Right.
Okay. I guess my last question would be, and sorry, I'm still thinking through some of this, would, that regardless of what happens through an RFP process, regardless of who the purveyor would be that we choose, we will have these two new vehicles, okay?
Well, Linda Sessions, 100 Banning Drive. Public transportation over town, Long Beach, foothill, Orange County. Metro, Los Angeles County. The buses and the transportation has a section in the front. The vehicles lower to the curb level for anybody's accessibility, whether it's a wheelchair or a cane, or somebody that has a hard time stepping up or down. The first rows fold up, and the sign says, "For handicap or seniors." They are used 24/7, the same vehicles. No special request. Everybody is respected.
I know, and Melinda, I don't mean to cut you off, but I'm going to. These, these are like that, as well as the buses. These are loaded to the floor, if you want to take a peek, and the buses have, are handicap accessible also, so we'll be right in the ballgame.
Yep, so it should be the same thing for everybody, because we're all equal.
Yes, yes, that way, yes, okay.
I'm sorry, we're back to my frustration, and that is the boats. Two vehicles are not sufficient to meet the needs here of all the seniors and all the handicap. I'm sorry. And I, you know, that's what's so beautiful about the system you have now. You have taxis that come when they're needed to where they're needed. We have never been turned down. We've never had to wait more than 10 minutes.
And you know what? We are not going to want that to happen as well.
Yes, but you'll only buy two vehicles, and they're saying that the Dial-A-Ride people have to ride these vehicles only.
And we, and, excuse me, we have to buy vehicles that meet all the ADA requirements.
I understand.
And you please realize, we only have limited funds, so we're starting with the two. Let's see how it works. If the community goes, "Oh, my God, you haven't, you know, I've been waiting for four days to get picked up," then maybe we can adjust our budgets and whatever, but right now, this is what we have.
I don't, that's not the point. Why, why would we have to ride on those vehicles when there are taxis available that are willing to take us at the set rate? I don't understand.
Okay, I can't respond to that.
Well, somebody should be able to...
I know, so if somebody wants...
Yeah, I'm voting on something.
And we are, we're voting to go out for...
Do you want me to answer that?
Please, and then we're moving forward. We're going to have a motion on the table.
So, the set rate is actually, every time you get in a Dial-A-Ride vehicle, we're paying $14 for your ride.
Whatever. Is this a taxi, or is this another?
But you can always catch a taxi. You can catch, the taxis aren't going away.
That's not the point. What difference does it make if the set costs more than we ride?
Go, do you really know that?
No, I think we should move forward.
We just, appreciate your comments. We will proceed, and is there a motion?
I make a motion, authorize staff to acquire approved from the MBTA Cal Act Cooperative Bid Program to purchase two Braun Corporation Enter Vans Class D Low Floor Minivans from creative bus sales in an amount not to exceed $91,723.23 and 26 cents, excuse me.
Second.
There's a motion and a second?
And I also want to just add that this purchase is budgeted for this year.
Yeah.
So, fully supportive.
Okay, all righty. Call for the vote?
All ayes.
Item 13.
Thank you, Audra. Thank you, Roy. Brian, Brian Bray, lucky number 13.
Oh, we're doing Megan Good Time, huh?
It's a definition of good time.
And we're having...
Time's up, Brian.
Brian's out.
Okay. Harbor Master?
Good evening. We're, we're talking about the shoreboat service that's available in Avalon. In Avalon Harbor.
Turn, turn the mic towards you, and then he won't have to turn it up as loud. Thank you.
I want to preface it by saying that we have the finest shoreboat operation that you can ever find right now. Mr. Stickler has the best equipment and does a great job for us, and has since 1977. The unfortunate part is, is that he's got a $600,000 shortfall, and he's looking to the city for a subsidy. They've talked about reducing hours, and that was a different proposal that didn't make it into the staff report. I got a copy of that yesterday. But it's either a shortfall of $600,000 where they're looking for city funds to follow up with that, with that shortfall in his revenue. So, on November 16th, Mr. Stickler and Island Enterprises amended their schedule and stopped operating shoreboat service, starting Monday at noon until Friday at 4:00. When Island Navigation is closed, the Harbor Department has been transporting passengers to and from moored boats and anchored boats within Avalon Harbor with the Harbor Patrol boats. It's not a safe situation with our patrol boats. They're not right for getting in and out with handholds, and, you know, it's fine for you or I to get in, but somebody that's 70 years old, you know, we're waiting for a trip and fall on that thing. So, if the Harbor Patrol is going to continue on having to do this intermittently while the shoreboat's out of service, we're asking that we obtain the right equipment for the right job. There was... The $600 shortfall, or $600,000 shortfall would, would require us to raise mooring fees by, I believe it was 45%. That means that somebody that's currently paying $31 would be asked to pay $45, and still have to pay $550 per person to ride on the shoreboat. So, they're not gaining anything other than a, more of an expense. I feel that the city doesn't have sufficient resources to go out and buy, you know, four boats at probably $200,000 to $250,000 apiece to start the service ourselves. And one of the other options that Island Enterprises had suggested is to go out for an RFP, to see if there's anybody else out there that can do it, you know, without a subsidy. And since option one would require the substantial capital outlay, option two would require a 45% increase in mooring fees to meet the subsidy request, it's my opinion that the third option, issuing an RFP, is the most viable for the city. It's the last thing I want to see, but I don't know where, where else we turn it.
Well, I'll start it. I had a conversation with Brian today, Harbor Master, about it today, and if we decide to go out for an RFP, I would like it written in such a way that we look at our, the broad parameters of what we may want, which is hours of operation and things like that, and leave the creativity of the, of the people that are in the voting businesses to come up with an option. For example, one of the little things I can, just like U-boats, Uber boats, you know, you don't need to have a $250,000 boat to pick up people off their, off their moorings, so they can call, and you have an app, and you just make a little more techno. And, I don't know, I just would like to see, let the, let the voting community kind of make their pitches, and it might not be comparing apples to apples, but I think this is a time for creativity, and so I would like, however you put those RFPs together, if we go that way, I would like it to be kind of open.
Would Uber boats need a Coast Guard license?
Excuse me?
Yes.
I was just wondering, these Uber boats would need to have the captain licensed.
That's something that, that Annie is talking about, or I'm sorry, the mayor is talking about right now, and anybody that hires, or hauls somebody for hire would need to be licensed by the Coast Guard. Anybody that hauls over six passengers in their boat would have to have their boat have a certified inspection of it by the Coast Guard.
I like the idea of the creativity that you're talking about, Annie. My, my only concern is that there are some, I mean, it is, I guess, depending on how you look at it, it is extremely dangerous conditions. It's not just flat calm water. We're not on a lake where you're just pulling up. So, there are specific boats. There are, you know, maybe not one particular boat, but the, the safety that, you know, would be required, where you're pulling up alongside different types of boats, where you're not damaging the boats, you know, things like that. But I like, I, I have been very happy with the shoreboat service that's provided, been provided as long as I've lived here, and I'm very, very familiar with it. So, I'm sad to see that we're in this situation, but I would like to move forward to see what, what is available out there, and that would be the RFP.
You seem to be, you seem, the Harbor Department seems to be kind of holding their own on this now, but as our season gets a little busier, which is going to start coming up in April?
But you got, you got to remember too, that we're only doing it Monday through Friday at 4:00, and they're running on the weekends. We could not run on the weekends right now.
No, exactly. And I think there, are they willing to keep this arrangement for some time?
I thought they were going to be here tonight to, to discuss this. I mean, the last thing I want to do is go out for the RFP, but, I mean, we're...
Of course you made mayor pro temp.
Since our last two agenda items were talking about subsidies, have we explored, is there any money out there floating around to provide this service? Any other money floating around out there?
Audra's gone, but Audra was tasked with looking for money, and I believe she'd been in contact with Boating and Waterways, but, because the current operator had said that there was money in Boating and Waterways, and I only know that for grants for launch facilities and so forth.
And have we contacted the supervisor? Is that a lot of money out there?
There's a couple of things. One thing that really concerns me is the transporting of people in the harbor boats. Now, I don't know, with the lawsuit or whatever, is it going to cost us more with the lawsuit against the city, or is it possible some way or somewhere to lease a couple of shoreboats from somewhere and have somebody run them in the harbor? As opposed to put them in the harbor boat, possibly getting lawsuits? I don't know if you have any operator, I don't know where the operators would be, I don't know if you have, your full-time guys have licenses, or, I mean, I don't know, I'm just kind of throwing this out there.
I mean, there's, there's two scenarios. I mean, there's a shoreboat operator, then there's a Harbor Patrol officer, and, you know, now and then, the Harbor guy can run somebody out, but to look to him to do it eight hours a day, you know, it's not the time or the place. One of the scenarios that Mr. Stickler had put forward was for us to buy his boats. And, you know, they're boats that are built anywhere between 1969 and, and, you know, 70, 71, and, you know, the market value on them is $195,000. And, you know, he said he'd lease them over 15 years at a cost of like $1,500 a month, but the thing is, I don't think we want, if we got in that business, we don't want to buy boats that are, you know, 45 years old.
I don't know what the answer is here. I just know if somebody falls, it could be expensive.
So, the answer was no on leasing? That's not really an option? Or they're not, those boats aren't available, really?
I would say, I don't know if they do a short-term lease, but...
For a couple boats, just, just to get our regular shoreboats back in, so it's not taxing the, your crew as much, so.
Well, it's, I'm, I'm more worried about the boat that they're getting in and out of, and then if somebody has more than six passengers, you know, we got to make multiple trips, and you can only do six at a time.
I acknowledge you.
Whether it be off one boat, or, you know, three or four boats on the way to the dock.
I acknowledge your concern.
Close Tuesdays, Wednesdays.
I'm just thinking in the, in, in the interim time, when we're waiting for the RFP to happen, it would be nice to have something that would take the place of what your crew is doing right now. But in the meantime, we got to move ahead with something here. And if it's an RFP process, I believe I am in favor of that. And it's one of those ASAP things and I know that you'll move that along as quickly as possible. Absolutely. You're well qualified for that.
Just, I mean, to mention, back in 1994, we went through the same thing. And the formal bid, bid process had one bidder and that was Island Navigation. So, I don't know what we're up against on this one.
Did they stop running also at that time in 94? Did they just cease running? Did they have a schedule like this? Do you remember?
I remember that they had threatened to stop running and I believe John Phelps was able to lease a boat from Doug Bombard Enterprises and ran for, I don't know, four or five months, whatever it was, and then was able to sell the boat back to Bombard Enterprises.
And, and it wasn't anybody from the harbor operating that? It was somebody from the ISMS came and operated that, if you remember?
They, the city bought the boat outright and then Ray Hamilton was running the boat and I think they hired somebody else part-time.
So there was a city guy running that?
Well, it's going to take time, a little bit of time to prepare the RFP and we're going to want to see the RFP before it goes out. So if we go down parallel paths, which is A, work on the RFP, but T, also look at additional possible funding sources. The MTA's out, the MTA funds, the Aquabus over Long Beach, you know, we got Don's office to talk to him about that. Because I, it's, I think it's really important that we provide a good level, quality of shoreboat service and I'm not sure that if we go through the time of the RFP, that we will get any responses. Because I've heard from Mr. Stickler, he's losing the money, just doesn't see any light at the end of the tunnel except for non-rushing train. And it's, when he lost the cruise ships, that's where his golden apple went away and I just...
And is that part of that 600,000 is from the cruise ship, you think? No?
It's the loss of the cruise ship which has created the shortfall in business.
Right, that's another thing. That's part of the shortfall.
His first proposal was maintain the whole fleet of 10 shoreboats and the second proposal was cut it down to three, I think, which is the reasonable number of boats required for the service in Avalon Bay. But the camps are going to have some issues because they provide charter service for that.
Well, let me ask just another question on that. If it came down to, we're concerned with the safety issue, or if you think that there's a big safety issue, which I think you've said, could we, because he's got a number of those boats, could we rent one of those boats and provide the service safely by using our guys in it? And then if one of the other shoreboats would be out of commission, but at least we'd have one good, kind of a pickup, safe pickup boat.
Right. I mean, we would have to hire somebody to do shoreboat specific. I'm super low on part-time hours right now and right in the middle of hiring three new part-time people that won't be ready. So, I mean, we would have to get somebody specific for shoreboats. So you're looking at equipment and manpower.
So we might be able to hire...
But is it worth somebody getting hurt and suing the city for a lot more money?
I mean, we need to get the right equipment for the right job.
Correct. And that's what I'm thinking on her suggestion of having a boat, having an operator there, doing that safely as opposed to putting them in the harbor boat. That's just the thought, I mean...
Because I have a few, I think you said that the pay scale for a Harbor Patrolman is different than the current operators of, of Stickler's boats.
About double.
Yeah. So we could maybe hire one of them. Because that would be a different kind of person.
Do we have ridership numbers?
I wouldn't say they're accurate because, you know, you're giving the shoreboat people a ride for free, you're giving the class bottom boat people a ride. I mean, I can, I can pull up numbers, but, you know, if, if they don't charge it, I don't know that it happened.
So, I mean, in general now, regardless, the, the city has provided a courtesy service in the off-hours for those needing to get to vessels before the shoreboat operated. So I guess what I'm looking at is, are ridership numbers now in the dead of winter is obviously quite a bit different than what it would be in the summer? We agree that the city right now could not even think of providing the service as, as we are right now for the summertime. But during a two to three-month period while we're going through the RFP process, are the ridership numbers so great that we would need to lease one of these other vessels and staff it differently?
It's not so much of the ridership numbers, but the safety of getting in and out of that patrol boat.
I understand that, but we've, we've had that, at least for the nine years I've lived here. The harbor has always provided a courtesy service when the shoreboats weren't in operation.
And now you're doing it on a daily basis with numbers of people versus here and there. So, I mean, we're, we're looking at the liability risk issue of the sheer numbers that would be transported versus what we used to give a courtesy ride here and there. Now we're doing it all the time.
Well, that's what I'm asking.
We're just waiting for a, a trip and fall.
Okay. And I understand that, but that's what I'm asking. Are you doing three deliveries a day versus what would be 250 in a given summer day? And if, if you're, you know, how many courtesy service rides does, did the city give last year in January on any given day where there are three a night?
Yeah, I mean, I can't give you last year's, I can't give you last year's numbers, but it's a substantial amount. I mean, there's been days where we've hauled 30 people and normally, you know, that might have been, you know, two on the graveyard shift or something.
Okay.
And you had said something, something about getting the right equipment to do the right job. You weren't talking about fixing up your shore, your, your patrol boats, you were talking about the right equipment?
Correct. I mean, something that's made for the task.
Yeah. Not just a little handrail to get those folks in and out of your boats or whatever. Okay.
Shoreboat.
Yeah, okay. Okay, well, I make a motion to issue a request for proposal. Did we already do that? Or we just talked about it? Request for proposal for Shore Boat Service and to add that we do go down parallel paths.
Yeah, additional funding sources.
Funding sources. And anything else you want to add to that?
We do get the RFP back before it goes out though, right?
It comes back to us before it goes out, yeah.
Just a second, the motion.
Okay, move to second. Any other comments, comments from the community? All those in favor?
All eyes.
Okay. Item number 14.
Okay. Item number 14 is the review of the waterside permit and encroachment permit conditions for Catalina snorkel and scuba adventures. This item was before the city council in October and at that time, I think it was October, council's direction was granted a temporary waterside permit and encroachment and asked for it to come back in January for review. You have several attachments to this item. One of them is we, Mr. Lieberman and the city have signed a settlement agreement and we finalized that this month. Last Friday, Mr. Lieberman came in and paid his money for his indirect wastewater discharge permit, which the city requires for anybody that discharges into our plant. There's the waterside permit conditions that Mr., our Harbor Master Bray outlined for you. And then the last thing would be the encroachment permit and for the council to determine if you want to keep the same guidelines or add anything additional. And, sorry JJ, I didn't know you were there to speak about it.
What she said.
I'm sorry, JJ.
You were on a roll there, didn't you?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Not yet.
Hi.
Correct.
Well, back in November, I was given the task of following up on Mr. Lieberman's operation. And I've been doing so till present. Mr. Lieberman has followed all the rules set down by the, by the council. And where they've pointed out his 12 to one, 12 swimmers to one of his guided tours, he's, he's been doing that. I've been observing him and I've got no, I've got no issues. He's followed, you know, he's worked with me really closely and we're, we're moving forward. So unless you have something special you want to talk about, we're, we're good to go at this end. Cindy?
Of course I have questions, JJ, come on.
That's okay.
They may not be for you though. One of the discussions that had gone back and forth, and I just want to clarify it, so I, I totally understand it, and that was the request to take measures to cover the sign on the side of the truck. So, and I don't know if Al is still here or not, but is the issue the, the general sign ordinance that it would have to be within an eight square foot? Is that what our original issue was?
The, the, as the discussion of the council, when it came to you, was that the sign was larger than allowed under the sign ordinance?
That's what I remember, okay.
And then the discussion was, is that because it's parked there in a scenic area, it should cover up the whole entire thing, even more than the sign ordinance because you wanted to have a scenic view unobstructed by logos wording and like, and that.
Right.
So I believe that's what he's been doing.
Covering up.
Okay.
Where it's visible.
Almost. That, well, and that was one of the, one of the things that we had, I had issues with trying to get a straightforward answer for. Mr. Lieberman has, has, has covered up his sign on the front of his truck with a placard that he puts on every time he comes out. And on the side, he's, he's taking care of the, the phone number, but not the sign. And the Catalina, oh, the diving Catalina. And I've been having a trouble trying to figure, find out, is it, you want all sides, the backside to the hill covered? Do you want the front side covered? Do you want, you know, I, I haven't got a straight answer. So we've kind of worked out this agreement until tonight. And, and whatever we do tonight, we will make sure that it's done before the, the boats in dry dock on Tuesdays. So he's got, you know, he's got some time to, to work on it, so.
I guess what I was thinking would be fair, and I didn't really feel that we were very clear on this. So to be fair, I would hope that we would keep it within the sign ordinance for everyone. And that would be whether it was three pieces of a sign that was within the, the eight square foot. I believe that's how, how the sign ordinance reads now, and I apologize, I don't have it in front of me.
Each facing.
It's each facing? So if you were to take the Avalon Grill, for example, that faces two streets, each one has to be within the eight square foot? Okay. So then there's the, so then he's conforming to that now, which is great.
Yeah. I, I mean, if it's eight square feet, then maybe I'm misunderstanding here, does that mean that he, he can show eight square feet or he can't show more than eight square feet? Or he can't show any?
It has to be within eight square feet.
I'm sorry?
Within eight square feet, no more than.
Okay. So if this sign on the front is 36 inches across and 36 inches high, a three-foot sign, then he's well within the right to be able to play that sign.
That's nine square feet.
I'm sorry, well, I just use that as a, as a, I don't know how big the sign is, but, but thank you. I appreciate you pointing that one out. Okay, if it's a two-foot sign, by two-foot sign is what?
Four, four square feet.
So will he be, would he be able to show this sign without having to cover it? Because it's, it's really, for him to cover that, he needs to go get on top of his roof, put a, a sign up there and hook it every time he drives to Lover's Cove. And then he takes it off when he, if he goes over to the thing. So I just...
I think we're, let's come back to that because I think we're looking up the ordinance. I don't, I don't ever remember as a planning commissioner doing the, the facings and whether or not it includes vehicles. So I guess I'm, that's where I'm confused.
You know, we, we watched the videotape and there was discussion about covering the sign because you want it in this, in this area. And so we've initially said it's got to be all the way covered where it's visible. And then looking at the videotape, we wanted to get clear direction bringing back to the council. So that's why we're here, here, here tonight. Because one of the purposes of the prior entitlement that you gave him is you wanted to see how it worked. You wanted to give him a couple months to see if he'd comply with everything he agreed with, JJ's reporting that he has. And then you were going to come back to look at, how is it working? Do you want to alter the hours? And now we're looking at the sign. So there's no recommendation to alter the hours that he can park there. The only issue is, we want to clarify the sign. It can be, you can, you can have it all the way covered, or you can say comply with the sign ordinance, which is eight square feet per face or total of two faces for 16 square feet, period. So you get, so the maximum you can have is 16 square feet, period.
And that includes vehicles?
Well, it, it...
It's just signs are signs?
It says, it, it's a business sign.
Oh, okay.
It's a business sign.
What is the front of the boat, what is the front of the vehicle saying?
It has a logo.
It just, it has a logo on the...
I mean, I can see the one on the side, but...
Okay, so...
And again, what makes it a business sign is the fact that it's parked in the city's encroachment area, stationary, you know, that's the place of the business. We're not talking about when it's driving through the, the city, but when it's operating business in the city's right of way.
But that's, no, because it's saying here that council requested that all logo signs on the applicant's truck that can be seen from the street be covered. And staff concur with this request. So that's even, I mean, oh, that's only for the encroachment permit?
Right.
Okay. Okay, well, I'm...
And then we're bringing back the encroachment permit tonight for you because the applicant has said, let me at least have the ability to have a sign that complies with the sign ordinance. And so, again, JJ has allowed the logo there so that we can exactly see what it's like, so that when you come back tonight, you can, you can look at that and decide whether you want to change that or allow him to have the sign as is.
I don't have a problem with either of the signs personally. You know, and I'm really pleased with Mr. Lieberman and the operation and I appreciate your hard work on this in all harbor. But I say, you knew it and let him have his little sign. So he doesn't have to come up with that.
So then my other question, maybe more of a comment than a question. I had community comment regarding why we would be requiring 12 persons per certified guide in Lover's Cove. And so... So, I just wanted to qualify that by saying that Lover's Cove was a bigger issue than other areas because of the amount of boat traffic that, and sometimes there can be up to three different boats. But I don't know whether or not all waterside permit holders who are conducting tours in Lover's Cove would be also held to that 12 to one ratio.
It is in their permits.
It is in their permits. Okay, I just, I, we went, we got the list and we went through the, this at the last council meeting, but I just wanted to, to clarify that that's the reason why it was such a big issue for Lover's Cove is because of the amount of vessel traffic.
Right. And I'm sorry, the sign, I mean, does it keep it clear, covered or does it not cover it? Or is that something that you guys have to talk about?
Well, we have to make a motion, but I, I would kind of go with just not having it keep it covered.
Is that conform with the ordinance?
As long as it's within the face.
16 square feet.
And it sounds like it is.
Yeah. And it, it, you could just say that he has to comply with the sign ordinance, which is 16 total square feet.
Give JJ a tape measure.
We'll get JJ to measure it.
There we go.
JJ's a jerk.
Me and numbers.
An adding machine.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what you think.
Well, let me, Mr. Lieberman, do you have anything you wanna comment on? At the podium, please. At the podium, please.
No, I'm pretty happy with, uh, working with JJ and trying to meet all the terms and conditions, so, um, whatever you guys say you want me to do, I'll do.
Okay.
So...
Dave, um, Dave, um, parking on the right-hand side, right, as you're going out, is that okay with you?
At Lover's Cove?
Yes, sir, not on the sidewalk, is that all right?
Yeah.
Okay, not on the sidewalk, correct?
Yeah, you're talking about the, the big truck.
No, I'm talking just about any vehicle.
Okay.
Okay? That, that, 'cause that's what's, that's what's written in here, so, it says parking in the designated area, which is the parking area, so, I'm okay with it, if you're okay with that.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Because, I'll tell you why I say that, it's because you've been parked on the sidewalk a few times, I don't, not a big thing, I just wanna clarify that, that...
Is it by the stairs?
Yeah.
We're just trying to get the gear out of there and get out, that's all we're doing, we're not there for more than a few minutes.
But the problem with that, Mr. Lieberman, there's a problem with that, because we already had one truck that went over onto the, the brick walkway, and it sunk, so, we don't want any vehicles on the brick walkways.
That's fine, yeah, I'm good.
Thanks, Dave.
Yep, you bet.
Thank you, Dave, and thank you, JJ. Okay, council, what a pleasure.
I'd like to make a motion. Um, let's see, renew, um, the applicant's, um, waterside, um, permit project application and encroachment permit, and I don't believe we're making any changes to the existing...
You're gonna specifically allow him to have signs, uh, that comply with the sign ordinance while he's parked there?
Okay.
Including those described below, um, that's my motion.
Second.
And, and I just wanna ask, will this come back, uh, this'll come back next year?
Yes.
As a, okay, perfect.
So, do, do I, do I need to continue doing what I'm doing with, with Mr. Lieberman, or is, is it, okay?
On a spot basis.
Well, I, I think you, you pretty much watch everybody that has businesses in the harbor.
Well, yeah, we look at them, but we don't see them, but, I mean, I make an effort to go over. I mean, you see a shoreboat every day go by, you know, you're, you're assuming that they're picking up people and dropping them off, but, I don't, you know, we don't count, so, um, uh, I've, I go over, and, and when he has a boat in.
It is left at your discretion to comply with the conditions that the council's put on the, uh, permit.
Excuse me?
Yeah, thank you.
No, and, and in other words...
Spot check.
In terms of the number of times he's going out there, and if he...
Oh.
And, and if, and if, if he violates it, and you don't catch him, then you're responsible.
So, are you, were you doing this every, were you doing this every day?
Uh, well, yeah, yeah, just with the cruise ship.
So, just do it, spot check it.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure that, I, I got no problem. I, I get it.
All right.
All right, there's been a motion, was there a second?
Yeah.
Okay, motion and second, let's call for vote.
All, all eyes.
Item 15.
One last.
Thanks, Dave.
So I just wanna make sure, I cannot see the eight-square feet per side...
For up to two sides.
On two sides. The side that is on the hillside, I was told that I can just leave that alone.
The total sign has to be within 16 feet and can't be any more than two sides, 16 square feet and no more than two sides.
Regardless of what side?
Regardless if it's facing the hill, or, or...
Yeah, the one that's on the hillside, I was told that I can just leave that alone, that's not...
No, that's what we're clarifying.
Not according to this, no.
Yeah, we just instructed you...
To be within...
To be within the ordinance, which is 16 square feet total.
Regardless if it's hillside or ocean side.
Okay, so, those vehicles that are wrapped, how does that determine square footage? There's several vehicles out there.
They're not parked, operating there, this is because you're parked on city property, operating a business, the only way you can get around that is to ask for the planning commission for assigned variance.
And, and that's what any other provider or, or business in town would have to do, is go to the planning commission and ask for a variance.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Dave. Thank you, Jesse.
Can we vote?
Okay.
Did we vote?
Yeah, we did, yeah, we did vote.
Okay, yeah, we're on item 15.
Item 15.
Yes.
This item is, is an ordinance change, and it's to make our saltwater system, our saltwater ordinance be in line with our sewer system, and this is something Mr. JH and myself have dragged our feet, and we wish we had changed a few years ago.
I'm sorry, Dennis, you're gonna be here and then bitter man.
Dennis, you didn't buy me enough donuts, I would've put you further on the agenda. Um, the proposed ordinance clarifies the maintenance responsibilities, whether it's private or, um, the public.
Dennis, you wanna talk on this one?
He can't.
Uh, it's self-explanatory, uh, the, the, uh, municipal code didn't go through the issue like it really should, there was some questions, so, we thought we'd make it more clear. The saltwater system is considered, uh, similar to the sewer system, and that's explicit in the, uh, municipal code, however, um, the sewer's explicit, the saltwater is not. Primarily the homeowners associations, um, it's, it's now clear that, uh, they own, uh, the saltwater system as well, so if you have any questions, I'm here to answer them for you.
I do not.
I read it. You want a motion?
Please.
Pardon?
Move this, just hold on to this, just hold on to this. Move that the city council introduce and waive all readings of ordinance permitting, title six, chapter six, section 8.506 of the Avalon Municipal Code regarding public and private saltwater systems.
Are there any comments from the community?
I second that motion.
No comments, okay.
Staff report looks great, Dennis.
Thank you.
Call for the vote.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, everyone, now we will be going to the closed session.
We'll go to closed session.
Oh, yes, sir.
Can I make a request for an agenda item regarding the transfer of oversized vehicle permits?
Sure.
Ooh, I like where you're going already.
Yeah, because, and, and for Mr. Lieberman's discussion came about his truck, 'cause he went from an oversized pickup truck to a box van with no review by the vehicle officer, thinking, we're missing not allowing that review.
Yeah, I like that.
No, that's great, you got, you end up?
Transfer of oversized permits.
Okay.
Should we say goodnight, Tony, now?
Goodnight, Tony.
Goodnight, Tony, we will be back, though.
We have two closed session items.
Oh, no.
Oversized vehicle permits.
Sorry, Scott.
Their own grandfather.
Two closed session items, one is the Casino Dock Cafe Real Property Negotiators, the second is Public Employee Performance Evaluation, interim sitting adjourned.
Go lead. Okay. And we are back from closed session.
Now, in closed session, the council took an action unanimously to, uh, hire CPS HR Consulting to conduct the search for a city manager.
Thank you very much, and needing adjourned.